This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
So I'm in the, this is Andy Steinberg, Chair of the Finance Committee, and I'm calling the Finance Committee of May 7, 2021, to order at 1:00 PM. And I apologize to everybody that we had a posting problem with what was scheduled to be yesterday's meeting. And I appreciate everyone's flexibility for being available today. I think that we have one more person to join us from the Finance Committee. And that's Jane Schefler, and she had indicated to me that she is available today. So hopefully she'll be joining, but in any event, today's meeting is a virtual meeting. It being held pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18. And this is both a meeting of the Town Council and Finance Committee. And this noted being conducted by a remote participation. So in accordance with the rules that we have regarding the virtual or remote participation meetings, I'm going to ask each member of the committee to indicate that they can hear me and be heard by responding after I say their name. And then I will turn it over to Lynn, who is President of the Council. She needs to call a meeting to order and then confirm attendance of two additional counselors who are not members of the Finance Committee but are participants in this joint meeting. So I will start with Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
Bob Hegner.
I'm here.
Ruth Pam.
Yeah.
Brittany Kubiak.
Present.
So I think that in Pat Angeles, sorry, Pat.
Yeah.
So Lynn, when you take over, that'll confirm your attendance and that you can hear and be heard.
Thank you. I am present for Finance Committee as a Finance Committee member. But as Chair of the Council, Senior Forum of the Amherst Town Council, I'm calling a meeting of the Amherst Town Council together at 1:04 PM on May 7, 2021. I want to check and make sure that Mandy Jo Hanke, you can hear us and we can hear you.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
And I just want to make sure that Mike and Doug can also hear us and we can hear them. Mike, yes?
Yep, yep.
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much. I also just want to make, oh, and we have, as well as Sean. I want to make sure that if Mandy Jo and George, either one of you decide to leave after a certain point in the presentation, you let us know that so that we can adjourn the Town Council meeting, but continue the Finance Committee meeting. Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, so.
Just a minute. I'm sorry, quick question. Do that through chat or just orally? I will have that card stop at about 2:30. So just, do you want me to send you a chat notice or what?
I would raise your hand. That's the public way to do it.
Okay, so today's meeting, we're going to start first by focusing on elementary schools. And then there are three sections of the budget that we're going to talk about later. And one is Senior Center Veteran Services. And Social Services is on the list, though we are going to have a conversation about whether that's something we want to start today, but continue until another day. But I'll cover that later so we can get into the schools now. So I want to welcome and thank Superintendent Morris and Dr. Slatter, the Finance Director for the Schools for joining us today. And I don't know if either one of you wants to say anything, sort of as a brief introductory overview. Is the, welcome to do that, please.
So thank you for having us. You know, speaking of hard stops, this meeting was originally scheduled, I was informed that it was supposed to be on Thursday, and then it shifted to Friday. As such, Allison McDonald, who's the Chair of the Amherst School Committee, is unable to attend given the shift, so she sends her apologies. I have a 145 that I can't change, that wouldn't have been a problem, but it is. And that's not a fault thing, it's just the reality. So we will try to be as brief. We do have a brief presentation. We'll try to roll through that as quick as possible so we can get more to Counselors' Questions, if that's okay with the Council and Committee, I guess I should say.
Yes.
So let me think this is going to work, but that's not what I wanted to project. So it's not going to work. Let me try again.
I see elementary school FY22 budget presentation.
Oh, you did? Okay. Sorry, I'm not a Zoom person, so one of the last holdouts. So that, I was seeing something else on my screen, so that is it. Thank you very much for letting me know, Kathy. So again, we'll roll through these slides pretty quickly. And, you know, starting from a place of our mission, which I think is really important to start with, even if it takes a minute to talk about, that we're really focusing on all learners and recognizing in a budget context that to meet the educational needs of some students has different financial aspects than for other students. And we try to balance those two and try to provide a budget consistent with the Finance Committee guidance and the guidance we receive from the Town of Amherst as best as we can. But there is some inherent conflict that comes up as we think about those things and we talk about it frequently. And it comes up all the time at our hearings that we have at the School Committee level around the budget each year. Just a bit on leadership team, the Fort River Principal, the search, I think, is just about coming to conclusion. I think next week we'll be able to announce the incoming Principal of Fort River, because sadly for us, Diane Chamberlain, has been principal there for her last four or five years, is becoming Principal at a school in Thailand. So she'll have a fabulous experience there, but we're sad she's leaving. But when we're in our boots and she's at the beach sometime in next December or January, we will be very jealous of her, but she's done a fabulous job at Fort River in a great number of ways. She's been the Principal that was there as we integrated the Comenantes to a language program. There's two specialized special education programs at Fort River, and her leadership will be sorely missed. Because these student demographics, after a period where they were shifting significantly, haven't shifted as much over the last three, four years in Amherst. We've seen that shift play out at the region. But at this point, some of the shifts that we'd seen in the past are pretty, are significantly stabilized, I would say, for where we were. I will note that this year's demographics may be affected by students who may have chosen other options. We did see a significant decrease in students this year. We're actually seeing an increase now that students are back in person. So even our numbers from two months ago are no longer accurate for enrollments. You'll see those later, but we're seeing a significant number of homeschooled and other families who made other options return to our schools now that our schools are open five days a week. This is something that you may have seen if you were at the regional meeting, but one of the significant focuses, actually frankly, over the last 20 years, but we've just had particular success with this over the last five, have been an increase in BIPOC or staff of color. And you could see that broken down by demographic group. And that really matters. Representation matters. It matters for our students in a diverse school that they're seeing adults who look like them. Think about the opportunity gap or educational debt we owe our students. This is something we're really proud of and have worked with the state. And they see us as a model. I'm on the Racial Imbalance Advisory Committee, which is statewide group, and having lots of conversations about what's happened here and our work on that. So, you know, big appreciation of Principals to Assistant Superintendent Doreen Cunningham for revising our hiring process completely, using some research and best practices to shift how we approach things, and you can see the results here in this document. So a couple of the initiatives we have going on, certainly we'll be thinking a lot about what this, you know, post-pandemic, which is probably optimistic language, but we'll go with it. Education looks like, we have a lot of facilities needs. We've made a lot of facilities changes in our schools as a result of the pandemic. So we have a lot of space needs, particularly at two of our elementary schools, at Fort River and at Wildwood, as we've shifted how those spaces are used that aren't, it's not exact, there's no backseas on what we did. And for good reason, but we are going to have to look at some adjustments over time. This was talked about even last week at School Committee. Will be continuing conversation at the Amherst School Committee level. We know that there's been a significant shift for students' well-being. And that's, some of that's around the pandemic, some of that's around racial justice and many other factors. So we are consistently focused on that. We received a grant this year that's supporting an increased focus on that. It was, I think Doug can correct me, but I think an $80-ish thousand grant where we're working with River Valley Mental Health Consultants, and they're working with us both directly with students as well as advising us on strategies around that. So appreciate to get the grant that doesn't come out of the taxpayers' pockets, but still supports that end. I just spoke about teacher-to-staff diversity, and the grant we received is listed. And we are, the last two weeks actually, both at the regional level and coming up next week at the Amherst level, really going to explore the sixth grade question. So it's my 20th year in the district. It's like cicadas, like every four or five years, the sixth grade question comes up. We are very atypical for having sixth grade students into the elementary school. Less than 20% of schools in Massachusetts, as well as the country, have a six, K to six, seven, eight, nine, 12 model. So we do intend, the middle, the Regional School Committee last week opened the door for elementary committees to start engaging on that question. We had a committed citizen group that worked on this and got sort of, the end got truncated because of the pandemic. So this is something that over the next couple of weeks and months, I think you'll begin to hear a lot more about. And we're going to be interested to engage the community and see where they are on this question. There's going to be an intersection between the space needs and the sixth grade question, as well as potentially the building project. So there's a lot of, I use this term a lot, a lot of Venn diagrams where there's a sixth grade question and a space question and a building project. And all those things have things in the middle, and they have each unique aspects to each of them. And that's the complex matrix that we're going to be talking off a lot about and engaging the community on in the next couple of months and go moving forward. I'm going to turn it to Doug, who's again conscious of time here, because we do want to get to Counselors' Questions, but just, maybe just, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't a good model, Doug, my apologies. But if you could just go over very briefly the next couple of slides, and we'll open it up for the Counselors and the Committee.
Absolutely. So based on this slide, we're talking about sort of where our budgets going this coming year. You know, we're asking for about a 2% increase, which meets with the guidance from the town as far as what it's available to do. That requires us to reduce from a level services budget by a little bit in order to make that happen. And so the ask for this coming year is going to be $24,386,522. That's not on the slide, but that is the relevant number. And so if you go to the next slide, please. And so this is, you know, sort of the quick snapshot of where do we spend our money? It's mostly on people, and it's a people business. Government generally is, and especially schools. We, you know, we do have expensive things, you know, buildings are expensive to have, but we, but people are a lot more expensive between what costs to pay them as well as their benefits. We have a pretty significant amount of our budget dedicated to that. And as those, as those needs for kids change, it changes who we have to have and who we need to have in place, and those costs shift accordingly. So this, this slide is just laying out a little bit of where we spend our money on staffing. But you see that regular ed, special ed, by and large, you know, the number of students in those groups is significantly different, but the amount of people and the costs associated are very similar. And I would suggest that's probably not atypical across other districts in the Commonwealth. Next slide, please. So in our regular education instruction, you know, half of it goes to classroom instruction. And that's where we spend a lion's share of our money in that regard. And then we have smaller amounts for the more specialized things. We do call it kindergarten. I always find that interesting, but I think it's a bit of an artifact of kindergarten not being compulsory even to this day. If you're under age six, you're not compelled by law to be in school, but that's a quirk of things. But you'll notice ELL is a pretty significant chunk, that's 14%. That's a pretty sizable chunk of spending that we need to do to support those kids that English isn't their first language. And again, in this, in this area, one thing that it's not easy to see here, nor is it in the other, in the other longer line-by-line document that we have, is where we utilize our school choice funding. I will say that does impact, and we'll get into specifics of that a little bit later. It does impact these, these numbers, but not so much the, the the effort that we make for those regular education students. Next slide, please. So in special education, we try to keep a fair amount of our special education students in district. And so we offer a number of programs in that regard to meet those kids' needs and keep them placed within our schools. We think that's better educationally, we think it's better for our non-special education students to be in and a part of the school with those kids. And we think it's a cost-effective strategy as well. But as you see here, you know, the breakdown of how we are delivering those services. What you'll see in the, in the graph, the left, is a pretty strong uptick over the last, you know, few years in our spending in special education. And that's driven by the needs of the students that we're experiencing. If you've seen Dr. Brady, our Special Education Director, in various meetings, she's talked about at the elementary school, that some of the students that we have currently have a much higher level of need, and that requires more resources to meet that need.
Okay, if I could just pause, just one, one comment I want to make. The preschool we have at Crocker Farm, which is a significant 12% of the special ed spending. I think, just, I think it's worth the 30 seconds to say that that is a state-defined program around special education. We do accept typical peers or regular education preschool students. But, and we charge a relatively nominal fee as compared to private preschools in the area. But it comes out because that's our obligation. When students turn three and they have special needs, every community in the Commonwealth is mandated to do that, is to have a, to support those students and their special needs from ages three to kindergarten. And so I think it's just worth noting, you see that at special ed preschool. Some of you may know that there are non-special education students there, but it does fall under the preschool bailiwick, because that's, that's how the structure of public preschools are set up in Massachusetts. Sorry, Doug, I just, I know that one. I often get questions about that.
Thank you for that. Let's go to the next slide, please. These are the other support services that we provide. It's, you know, you know, a much smaller part of the budget, but it's a variety of ways in which we try to support our staff through professional development, keep our libraries working, health services, obviously, that's, that's an area this year that we've all been noticing a lot more of, because we've had to spend a lot more time thinking about our, our health and our community health and that sort of thing. But these are the areas that fall outside of what you think of as classic instruction and other ways we support students and our staff in order to achieve our goals. Next slide, please. So here's a list of adds and cuts.
Yep, and I can take this one. So we do have declining enrollment. We're anticipating one fewer, a need for one fewer classroom teacher in the district. Special ed teacher, we did do an ad when Comenantes came in to make sure that we were covered in terms of bilingual special education needs. We said at the time, it's a temporary need, because as the program matures, we would have the same number of special educators as all the other schools. It was just at the beginning, we only had kindergarteners, and you had special needs, and it needed to be delivered bilingually. We needed a temporary add. And we try to be consistent. When we say it's a temporary add, it's really a temporary add. Now that Comenantes will be K to two, we're able to reduce a position and still maintain our services of student needs. So the below is the specials, so with declining enrollment, and all these are difficult cuts, I want to say. With declining enrollment, we are able to ensure that students have all of their specials at the same amount of time they currently have them. It will have an impact somewhat on the integration parts of the day, but none of this will, none, this reduction won't reduce the instructional block for specials and art. But it does reduce the integration time in those two areas. At the facilities, I think we spoke about that at the regional level, and the food service, some of the central office cuts, we've talked about multiple places. The bilingual psychologist, again, to clarify, this is not a direct service position. This is about literally who does evaluations when there are bilingual students who are being tested for special education. We've had the position posted for a year and a half. We haven't had any suitable applicants. We will save money by contracting this out, but I know this is one that's been a little bit confused perhaps. I haven't done a good job clarifying that piece. This is not a reduction in services at all. Reception position at central office, and our ELL program report indicated that we had more interpreters than was, you know, perhaps beneficial or compared to other comparable districts. So again, difficult reduction, but we want to be fiscally conscious. And when we have experts in the field tell us actually, you know, what best practice is, and we're doing something a little different, we make those reductions. I didn't talk about there was no sabbatical request, and we're anticipating some turnover savers, turnover savings, which is when people retire. We generally hire people, and we've been really good about that the last couple of years and put an emphasis on hiring people that can replace them, who are highly talented and have long careers ahead of them, and that also is positive for our budget. So those were the level service pieces, and I think, because it's 120 and I have a 145, I'm going to stop there, because I feel, I'm afraid otherwise we'll do all the talking and not allow for the other folks to ask questions, if that's okay with the, with you, Lynn.
So thank you for the initial presentation. And I'm going to just say one thing, well, actually, Jane Schefler has joined us. And Jane, I'm going to just confirm that you can hear us and we can hear you.
I'm here.
Okay, great.
Sorry for the delay.
No, that's okay. So the couple of reminders, and then I'm going to try and get into questions really quickly, because we are limited in time with Superintendent Morris present. As we talk about the budget, I think that we're, that the budget we're looking at right now is the budget that is part of what is from the town budget. And it is, so it matches what was in the budget guidelines that were passed by the Council that started the process. The funds that might be available from federal sources for, because of the pandemic, you, both the Yester funds and American Recovery Act funds is a separate pot of money. And we can ask questions about it, but I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear that the budget as presented does not include any of those funds. Doug, write on that, or?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I just wanted, and the other thing that I wanted to point out as far as the appropriation from, that's from the town, that the Council, we have a, this is, that budget is incorporated in the town manager's budget. And the Council can add, cannot add to it, it can only confirm it or subtract money from any budget. And that's a matter both of what's in the Charter and Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32. So that we have to, just want to remind ourselves of that. And I think that those were the two introductory things I wanted to say. And I guess the other point is that, you know, we want to understand the budget, but you know, it is the school committee's budget that is being presented to us. So with that, I want to open it up to questions. And I'm going to ask that people try and focus on questions that they think are really important to ask while the Superintendent is present, because he does have a hard stop that he's in the form of this about. And then I will go from, maybe Doug can stay a little bit longer if the conversation continues. So please focus on questions you think that really are best to ask while the Superintendent is still with us. I had seen a couple of hands up earlier, and one was Mandy. I, do you?
Um, I just wanted to clarify what you just said about budgets, because Section 32 of Chapter 44 of the MGL actually does have a way to raise school budgets, but it requires the cooperation of the school committee. And at this point, the school committee has not requested an increase in that budget. So it's, it's a little more complicated than just no, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, we should talk about that later, because I was, I'm not clear about that, because it has to do with regional schools. The mention, I think, in section of, as I recall, it mentions regional schools, not local schools.
It mentions both, but we can talk about that later when the Superintendent.
Thank you. Kathy, what, but again, please try and start with questions that you really think are important to ask. Well, Superintendent Morris is here.
Okay, I sent some of these in, but not very much in advance, so I apologize. And Lynn, I know, had sent some in, and she said some of mine overlapped. But you already mentioned, I'll just focus on the bigger items than I, and I'm, I'm looking in particular for, is there any way to come back and revisit a couple of decisions that were being made? But I'll wait on that. So my, my first question is on special education. I did a four-year rate of increase. So I took 2022 over 2018 for each of several items. And special, that whole expenditure on payroll is up about 15% compared to 3% for regular. So I think, Mike, what you said is that is, so my question is that more kids in that category and/or more seriously high-needs kids? And then my third part to this question is, you know, is Amherst disproportionately there? And compared to North Hampton surrounding schools? And could the state help us out? So if we went and looked at where the circuit breaker threshold is, on where the state comes in? So is there, are there issues? And I'll ask this about charter, secondly, but issues we should be raising to the Mandy and Mindy and Joe level that would help any district that wants to make sure they're doing well by special needs kids, as you said, you know, providing what the kids need? If they become a magnet for, for children because of the reputation and get high-need kids as a result of that, that the state circuit breaker could help? So it's that three-part. It's disproportionate compared to regular. And I'm worried that the end result, what you're watching, looking at every day, is squeezing out the breadth of other programs we can offer, because you have to live within this restricted budget. So I'll stop with that as my first question.
Sure, I can, I can start, and I'll ask Doug maybe to do a little bit on circuit breaker. He'll do better than I will at that. But I think what you're seeing is, what you're saying is an accurate reflection. We are seeing more students who come in with not just special learning needs, or learning needs, but health needs. So the number of students we have who, whose IEPs from when they turn three require a nurse assistant to be with them to access the curriculum, it's higher than what we've seen, right? And our preschool staff have been noting this for a number of years, that they're seeing more and more students with more significant needs. I think Fay Brady's, and it was a public meeting, she said it before in a public meeting. It's, you know, she's not trying to advertise how good a job we do at special ed, we just do it. But I, you know, bluntly, there's a reality to that. And, you know, special education parents have networks and communicate about districts that are supporting their children at high level, and not just public schools, all schools. I don't want to just make it about public schools. And, and, you know, for better or worse, and I think it's, you know, better for kids and perhaps worse fiscally, we do have a reputation of working collaboratively with families to provide the resources that they need to be successful. And so this is a desirable community that way. We have a lot of internal programs that's atypical, especially in Hampshire and Franklin County. So if you want, if you have a student with intensive needs and you don't want to send them out to a day program, there's not many school districts that have, first of all, that are large enough, frankly. And this isn't a critique of, I mean, if you're in Hadley, I know the Superintendent there really well. It's a wonderful school district. There's not, it's such a small district, there's not going to be enough students with similar needs to create a program. In our situation, that's a little bit different. We do have the capacity that way. So it is something we're aware of. It's something we talk about frequently. Dr. Brady is actually having some of those conversations, our special ed director, with Principals right now. We also have a community that requests, because with special education requests, it can come from a family, it can come from the school, and we have a very active community. And that's a great thing. And, but it also means, compared to some of our neighboring districts, parents rightfully advocate. parents rightfully advocate for the services that their children need. And, and we try to collaborate when we can. It's not to say that every family would say that their needs, child's needs are fully met in the district with special needs. I, we have data to show that that's not the case. But the cost piece of it is, is real and we are, it is a concern that we have. And it's still the students who are in front of us, right? And, and taking care of the needs has to be the highest priority. But Doug can speak a bit about circuit breaker and how that works, which is a partial reimbursement. It doesn't fully reimburse the cost, but it is somewhat helpful fiscally for us.
Right, so generally speaking, the way it works is the, the legislature will fund a circuit with, you know, circuit breaker at a certain level. And what that hap, what happens is this, is that in order to qualify for that type of reimbursement, first off, your, your expenses for a given job will have to be four times a base rate. So they have a sort of per pupil base rate. It's in the 12 to $13,000 range. Your overall expenses have to exceed four times that number before you can even ask for reimbursement. Then once you get above that threshold, then they reimburse at a particular percentage of. So it's not 100%. Once you get above that, it's, it's a percentage of that. And that's about, you know, what that percentage is, is based on what the funding looks like at the state level. So if they fund the circuit breaker, you know, large, you know, to a greater extent, that percentage goes up and we get more support for us in that regard. And so it's, it's a pretty high bar. I mean, to get to four times the sort of base level of costs is, is in the order of $45,000 to $50,000. That's a, that's a pretty expensive amount of work and, and support we're giving a kid. But nonetheless, we have some students that qualify in that area and, and we, we definitely leverage the option to, to seek that funding.
Just to, on the legislative end, then I know that's what's in the law now. So if we were, we, meaning the larger we of the town or we, the U, were to say, what would happen if we lowered it to three times and/or increased the percentage? How many districts would benefit that? What would be the benefit to Amherst? You know, have we done either, not recently, have we ever done that kind of analysis? And, and or provided it then to our two legislative leaders?
Yeah, I can jump in a little bit, which is to say that this is part of the Student Opportunity Act. And some of the work was, Circuit Breaker was a honestly, a highly charged item because it benefits all districts. And the idea of the Student Opportunity Act was primarily to equal out disparities in funding between districts that do spend, have a high per people cost because they have a tax base that can support that or is willing to support that versus more urban districts that don't have that. So, you know, but it certainly would help an awful lot. It would also help if Circuit Breaker was fully funded. But the big thing that I would answer, ask your question, although it's a bigger ask. So there's the IDEA funding, which is the federal special education funding, which when IDA, I'm guessing 60, 70s, I think it was early 70s when IDA was passed. They're nowhere close to funding their original commitment on IDEA. So, you know, it, it actually, if we're real serious, we collectively are real serious about special education costs. I actually don't think the state is necessarily, it's the most convenient place, right? We know the legislators personally, all those things. But at the federal level, they're wildly underfunding their commitment to special education. And, you know, I think they're funding it, I'm a little nervous saying in a public meeting, but it's well under half. That I feel comfortable saying that the federal government's commitments and IDA are being, they're never close to funding even half of what the original commitment was.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So there's a, you're suggesting that if we do a legend, if we do a focus, it might better or be both levels, but definitely should not forget the federal level.
It's, it's really the only thing they fund for the most part in substantive ways. You know, most of the state funding comes from local to state in terms of public schools. So special ed is the one piece where the federal has a pretty large impact. There's other grants that they do like Title One, but IDA is a big special education funding source for districts.
I don't want to take up too much of the time, Andy, but the other question I had is similar to this on charter. When yeah, so should I just give everyone else a chance to ask a question, Lynn?
I'd also just like, several people have questions on special ed rather than jump around. I'd like special ed, so.
Sure, I, I'll come back, I'll come back later.
So Bernie, was your question about special ed?
Yeah, it was on the circuit breaker specifically. And I just wanted, one of the good doctors to refresh my memory is that my memory of the circuit breaker is it's, it's retroactive. So you have to put up 100% of your costs. And then at some point in the future, the state will reimburse you whatever they figure out your, you, you, you're, you're due under the circuit breaker. So you're looking at getting money back in the following fiscal year frequently.
That's correct. There, there is a lag of basically a year. So the expenses we submit from this year would be paid to us next year. They do have, if you have an extraordinarily expensive placement that comes in submit year, a kid moves to town that has an extraordinarily expensive placement, they do have a, an option that allows you to get immediate relief. But by and large, yes, it's a year lag.
Thanks.
Anything else people want to raise, Lynn?
In looking at the, the first page of the detailed budget and then also page 38, I see a rise in costs in special ed, but a decrease in staff. Am I reading that correctly?
You, Doug, you want to take this one? Sure.
Yeah, so there's, this one piece that you should know generally about. So that list of additions and reductions that we have, those have not been applied in the detailed part of the budget. They're only, they're still in a lump sum sort of at the, at the bottom right before the grand total. And so the, the salary lines that would be associated in special education are still reflecting that the, the values that are in the, in that reductions list. So that, that increase would be reduced by, you know, the, the amount on that, which I think is about $95,000. So that, that year over year change of 200 and some 1,000 would, would reduce by about 95,000 with the proposed reductions. And then the other changes in those costs are, are relative to the staff that we have and, and the needs the students have relative to the staffing that we, we were projecting there.
But when I look then at page 38, included in the $372,000 worth of cuts seems to be one special ed teacher and one bilingual psychologist. I think you already explained that one earlier that, you know, it's, but it, so we're seeing an increase in costs, but yet we're reducing staff. Am I getting that right?
You are. You know, some of it has to do with, with the, the steps that, that staff get. We're, and this is a broad general sort of statement about all of the staff we have. We're younger than we used to be. When I first started working for the district, about, I think it was about 75% of the staff were at the very top step. Right now, we're in the between like 50 and 60% of the staffer are at the top step, which means, you know, the other half essentially are going to get a step. Step increases for an individual roughly in the 4% range, which puts a lot more pressure on the budget in, in, you know, in a year over year basis. And then additionally, I think, you know, as, as we talk about the needs of the students, sometimes the FTEs don't change as much, but who does the work does? So if, you know, if a parent educator can do the support a student and that student moves to the middle school and then the kid that comes in that might have a special need now needs someone with, with a higher level of sophistication in their training than that person, the FTE might not change, but the, but the cost does because the person is more expensive to hire.
Thank you.
Mandy, do roots your question on special ed?
Yeah, it's a follow up to Lynn's. The expense account, I think she was referencing too, on page one shows a special ed increase of 250 plus $1,000. You know, it's, it's really other than personnel payroll, the only increase in the budget, significant increase in the budget. There's others. And so what is accounting? I think she asked this earlier, but in, in pre-meeting questions, but what is causing that significant increase there? And is that something that will maintain an increase year over year now? In terms of either that leveling out at the 400 total? Or is it going to be still going up 200 and some K a year after FY22?
I'm going to take this one, Doug, or you want to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have historically, for most of the years I've been doing this, we've had less than two at a district placements at the elementary level. So when we feel like we can't meet the educational needs of students, then, you know, we, you know, meet with the team, including the family and figure out the best educational environment. We've had an increase in students whose needs we can't meet in our, despite our special ed program. So that, that expense is really about tuitions. So we wouldn't expect that line to increase unless there were more students who come in that level of needs, which we don't have information as the case. The students we have, we have had some intensive needs students come in, but they fit well within our current programming structure. But we've, we've seen an increase and that's really atypical for us at the elementary level to have students at a district. As I said, most, there's been plenty of years we've had zero at the elementary level. And frankly, we pride ourselves on that, that our programs are supported well enough to be able to, that broad range of students that we have. But we've had students that, that we, at team meetings, they came to an agreement that we, we weren't the right program to meet the educational needs of that student. So it is a repeating cost. So I want to be clear about that to your question, but it's not necessarily an escalating cost. Does that, does that make sense? Okay.
Okay. So Kathy, you're the only one that right now is your hand up. Remember to please focus as you pick questions and ones you think are important for Dr. Morrison. Because he has to leave in a couple of minutes and I do have one question that I at least want to pop out. So, but go ahead Kathy.
As I said, I didn't want to dominate this. So if other people have questions, I mean, my question on charter was similar to the circuit breaker and I can do it later. But it's, it's, I want to, when we have a child, I don't know how many kids are leaving for charter schools from elementary? And do they bring the average higher amount that we are spending compared to other towns? And does that include the special needs kids in that average higher? And so where I'm going is a change in formula and a change its way it's calculated. Do we have that analysis and are we providing that at the Boston level? So it's, I know it's nothing you can do about, but I just don't have a sense of how much it affects the budget. I didn't see anything that talked about charter leaving and the cost to us.
Yeah, so I can, I can answer that, I think. And Sean may, I may do a throwback call to Sean because we worked on this a couple of years ago in his old role. But the short story is lots of unfair things about the charter form really. One of, we're seeing pretty flat attendance, you know, or students going out. We're not seeing an increase that way. But you're absolutely right that because we support our special ed students, that does increase our per people allotment, which then influences how much money charter schools gain by students from Amherst going, attending them. So, you know, there's other factors like school choice and that factors in. So there's a lot of, just very bluntly, the charter schools in our area, and I'm not, this isn't a critique, but they don't have specialized programs the way we do, right? Their size isn't there. It's not like a broad, right? I get a lot of virtual tomatoes thrown at me for a lot of things about charter schools. This is not a dig at charter schools. It's a dig at the formula that includes intensive need students in a formula and those schools aren't, you know, in general, programming for intensive need students, which I find broadly unfair as well as out of district students. So, you know, we could have out of district students that are six digits, you know, one student, the tuition based on the students' needs may be in the six digits. That gets factored into our cost, but it also gets factored into a formula that has nothing to do with the students who are attending charter schools. So that, because I have to leave in a second because I have a Desi conference call, I'm happy to talk offline, but Sean has also done a lot of work a couple of years ago and we both have the scars to prove it in terms of some discussions about this that some people like, some people don't like. But in terms in general, we have fewer special education students going out for charter schools, particularly as it relates to intensive special need students. So we have data on that. Our charter school Exodus rate, you know, outrate is, is pretty constant, you know, the last three, four years, three years, I would say. It's gone down one year. It's been pretty flat. So we're not seeing an increase, we're not seeing a decrease. We, we do, you know, that money that we charter choice does come out of the budget from the town. So, you know, some other communities, and I'm not advocating for this, like Belcher Town, the money from charter, those costs are borne by the town, not directly by the district. That's not how we do it here in Amherst. I'm not complaining, I'm not advocating, but it, different towns allocate the charter school costs differently. And so one of the things when you think about per pupil cost, and that's why it's such a funny number is it's, it's, you know, we have this dance about, well, we reimburse the town for the year before. Other towns don't organize things that way. So it's, it's a longer conversation than probably we have capacity or time for now, but one I'd be happy to engage in. And I'll answer, because I do have Desi texting me because I got to be on a conference call with them right now, ironically. But one other question you asked that I can't answer, you emailed Kathy is about Wildwood's utility costs being greater than Fort River's utility costs. And shockingly, I know they answered that one because I don't do well on utilities. But Wildwood is oil heat and Fort River was updated, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 years ago to gas heat. We had plans to look at that for Wildwood. There was the moratorium, because it, the building I'm in right now at the middle school, you know, is across the field from Wildwood and is on gas. When we met and the moratorium happened and that's where we are. But that's why there's a cost difference is that in general, oil is more expensive than, than gas. And I leave you in the very capable hands of Dr. Slaughter. Again, I apologize with the date change. I couldn't change this other meeting. It wasn't, you know, Desi calls, I got to do what they got to tell me, right?
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry about that. The other question I was going to ask, just so you know, and I, because you can, if Doug can't answer it, you can take it up in another format. And that is whether you've thought about the process for allocating S R and Recovery Act funds that are available to the schools and what they might be used for any of the budget reductions if possible, if that was something you were thinking about. But I'll leave it to Doug if he can answer it. And if not, we'll take it up in a later format.
I'll give you my 32nd and Doug will do more. But on S R three, which is the most recent stimulus, we don't have, Desi sent an email to this, like we don't have the actual amount, nor do we have specifics unintended use or allowable uses. It says it's loosely like that other ones, except you have this and this and that. So we're still waiting is a short story on S R three. It's a multi-year grant. So at this point, we're still in a holding zone, but I've talked to Paul and Sean, who have been fabulous throughout this process. But Doug and I about, you know, both the municipal and the school. And once we get more clarity, having conversations about what that would look like going forward. But I will leave you in Dr. Slaughter's capable hands. Again, I apologize to have to leave earlier than intended with the date change, but I hope you all have a lovely weekend. And those of you mothers, have a wonderful Mother's Day this weekend.
Thank you. So Lynn, I'll see if you had something.
I just want to make a request that creates an equal playing field. And that is as much as Superintendent Morris is always so willing to do stuff offline, it's really not appropriate that questions get asked to him and then not shared in terms of answers with everyone. So if we feel we need to bring somebody back or we feel we need to create a set of questions, I think that's great. But the offline isn't really, doesn't create the level playing field of knowledge. Thank you.
No, I think that that's a good point. And I raised the question that I raised because I thought it was of general interest and that we would, as a committee, want to know the answer to, but we certainly should not be, I, I agree with what you said about everything should be done for the benefit of the entire committee and not offline. So Kathy, did you, you had other questions that had been posed in advance and Doug might have answers to?
Okay, I, I, I have one more. The central, I, I literally did what I think is a sort of a simplistic way of looking at things. And I went to the four year increase and everything, anything that was not in the same per year. So central administration compared to school administration goes up much faster again in, as a rate of increase over that four years. And I don't, my, my bigger question is, what is the total central administration cost? And can we see that somewhere? Because you allocate that then down to regional and to elementary, as I understand it, right? You know, so central administration has to be priced out somewhere. So I didn't know whether maybe this was the allocation changed, you know, that more of it was going to elementary had gone before, or whether it's a staffing that someone moved out of school administration up to central. But it was enough of a difference. So one went up by 17% and the other went up but under two over the four years. So I wasn't looking at tiny differences. So that was my, my other overarching question when I just looked at change over time. So that was my, my other overarching question when I just looked at change over time.
Right, so I'll start with the first question first, which was around how we apportion those costs between the different, the three different districts that we work with here. We really haven't changed that, uh, significantly over the last couple of years. So that's, that's not probably much of a driver in that regard, there may be individuals that. The apportionment between districts has changed a little bit, I think that's likely a bit of a cause there. I think there's also some, there's been some, uh. I don't want to necessarily say central office additions, there's, there have been some, some work, uh, and some positions in the central that are now being essentially charged to the central office. That had been, uh, you know. If you go far enough back, we're in there and then kind of moved out into either, uh, regular education or in school level, uh, educational costs and then come back. So like, uh, our curriculum directors' cost is one that's come on in the last couple of years. We've had curriculum directors and, and people in those roles over the, over the intervening years, but at times it's been. You know, shared out into the school administration and now it's more centralized. We've also, um. The staffing that supports the, the, uh, the central offices around, uh, communication and, and clerical and administrative support, that kind of thing. It's had some changes in the last couple of years. And so that's probably also, that, that, not probably, that is a little bit of it as well, it's not a huge piece, but. You know, it did, it did bring some people into that central office staffing, uh, area that, that would have caused that increase as well. As far as the school administration costs, um, you know, that, that has stayed fairly flat because we've got, uh, you know, we've had three buildings with a principal and assistant principal and their clerical staff. And that's all stayed pretty much the same, so what you're seeing there is, is, uh, is, is pretty. Unchanged over the last several years, so the, the increases there are relative to people's, uh, steps and colas.
Katie, uh, Lynn.
Thanks Doug, um, I've, I actually, I also asked a question about facilities and even since I've asked it. Something that we said today, uh, sparks me to, uh, to push a little more. And that is that I know that we were able to make some serious accommodations. For in, in both Fort River and Wildwood. But now that we have students coming back in more, in greater numbers, what in fact are we doing about our facilities? That allows us to still abide by the state guidelines, um, for COVID? And I know that you have an increased amount here in facilities under expenses, uh, which is what my original question was. But it does seem to me that we've got two schools that. I'm actually, we have three elementary schools that. I'm not clear how you can do desks at part, whatever level they're supposed to be and, you know, still have kids not sitting on window sills.
So I'll be able to answer that to some degree, not probably to the fullest amount that the superintendent certainly could, but, but I'll certainly answer some of that. So I'll start with your original question, which was relative to sort of the coming year's budget. There are a few, you know, pressure points on, on that, uh, facilities area and, and so in that facilities area and expenses have our utilities. And so, uh, you know, when you guys raise the water and sewer rates, that's an expense that gets passed on to us, uh, our electric bills go up. I mean, I'm not gonna blame you guys for, I mean, the need to do that was, was necessary and as necessary. So, you know, I've sat in the, uh, select board chair and voted for those, uh, increases in other years. So I, I do appreciate the, the need there, but it does have that impact on us a little bit. Those are small, they're not huge dollar amounts, but they do contribute to that. You know, the, the anticipation of, of, uh, fuel costs for the coming years is another one. And so those, those are the ones I can think of off, off top of my head that, that are starting to affect that facility's use, the, the increases in, uh. Well, not transportation, it's held separate there. So those are, those are the primary ones, I would say there in, and in general, talking about sort of the space question, uh, you know, it is, it is real, is a, it is a complicated one. Fortunately, at this point in time for this year. You know, as we bring the kids back, you know, we're still at a, at much lower numbers, uh, you know, kids had the option to remain in remote. And so we didn't, I think about 75% decided to return it in person. So that's one piece that's kept the current circumstance such that we can fit within the spaces we have. But I think also as we go into next year, the utilization of space is going to be very different, especially Fort River and, and, uh. And, uh, Wildwood, uh, by virtue of the modifications we made, uh, we're gonna leverage spaces like cafeteria spaces, uh, differently. I'm sure we're gonna use outdoor, uh. Uh, spaces much more often. We are, you know, continuing to plan and, and think about that. I think the other thing that's, that's a, a really open question for us and, and it just gets to, I think when you had sent us, is, uh, enrollment. I think that's such an open question for us this coming year. You know, uh, we've, you know, the drop from last year to this year was pretty significant, uh, in, in the order of four to five percent. That's a much, much larger drop than, than it would normally be the case. We expect a fair number of those students to come back, but exactly who will or who won't, uh, and how much? And is, is very dependent upon, uh, very individual decisions, we just don't know. So, you know, we're kind of planning on, uh, about the same number of students we have this year. There, it probably will be a little larger than that. But, you know, we'll, we'll be spending our, our time and are already spending time, uh, thinking about those spaces and how to activate those. And, and we're doing some more work in, in regard to air quality in some spaces, so that we can leverage more of those buildings for student use that might not be in, in use right now.
Jane, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, the one that I'm thinking of right now, I, I have a handful, but I'm gonna address this one first. So, um, I'm looking at the school administration budgets and I'm looking at the payroll for principal and assistant principal. And it looks like at Crocker Farm and Wildwood, uh, actually at all three, the principals are getting a pay cut. And the assistant principals are either remaining flat or in the case of Crocker Farm, there's a slight increase. But I, are we having, do we have that much staffing turnover or like what would the reason for? A decrease for the, in the payroll for the principal and not even a slight bump for the assistant principal? I guess that just seems a little hinky.
So, uh, this is where I get to, to be embarrassed, um, becau- because I believe in, uh, reviewing that. In going from last year to what we budgeted and put into the budget last year for our principals was, uh. Was incorrect, to be perfectly honest. We had counted it, so most, most of those type of staff have a base salary and then they have a few things like longevity. Or, uh, additional pay for, for a doctoral degree, those types of things, there are a few different categories of additional pay that people receive. And I think we double counted the additional pay, so in each, you know, in each of those cases, there was a, a few thousand dollars for those, uh, principals that we essentially double counted. So we over budgeted in the current year. So we corrected that for fiscal 22, it makes it look like we're cutting their pay, which really isn't the case. The other general, you know, uh, approach we've taken with, with those folks is that, you know, we are in, in negotiations. And so in the short term, we, we will, uh, uh, you know, there's not, uh, we'll have step increases for our assistant principals. Principals all are on what's called committee action, um, and we, we hold those at a 0% cola until a decision is made for the district generally. And that involves, you know, uh, a, a broad set of, of factors, but you know, some of it's the negotiation with the unions on their potential cola. So what we, you know, we, we have accounted for potential cost of living increases, uh, but not directly in the line that, that it sits in right now. I guess is the best way to describe that.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Mandy?
Yeah, um, so I was looking at the total budget, not just for this year, and I know I've been concentrating on a lot of cuts and how you guys present a budget. And then level services and then all these cuts and all, but I was looking at the projecteds for the next couple of years and all of the payroll account increases. And, um, and then looking at the projected from the manager budget, which also projects budgets for elementary schools. And I am concerned. And I, I'm concerned about payrolls increasing above two and a half percent a year, and I don't know whether we can change that or not. But as you know, we've got caps on how much we can increase our property taxes. And you have projected in your budget, a three and a half percent increase every year for level services. And then an actual 2.7 increase in, um, sort of the funded budget, the projected actual budget. The managers project, projected a two and a half increase in out years. So right off the bat, they don't even agree. Um, but what is the school's plan, um, given that we likely can't go much above two and a half percent any year? When payroll, and, and this is, this is gonna be a question for the manager and all when we get to that. So it's not just the schools, when payroll increases above two and a half percent?
Right, so I think that the, um, you know, that is, that's a difficulty we face. I mean, I think that, you know, uh, like I said earlier, you know, our, our staff are getting younger, so they're not all at the top step. You know, if everybody's at the top step, then as long as your cola is less than the, the, the prop two and a half limitation, you know, your salaries stay within the bounds of what you need to, to have happen. So it, it, you know, it is, it's an inherent structural problem that we have, I don't deny that. We've, we, you know, this, the, the difference between our steps, uh, in our, in our salary grid is about, what I said before, about 4% on average. And so that does pose an, an inherent, uh, conflict. The other thing I will say just about those projected out years, I did not spend a lot of time reviewing or thinking about the projection percentages I used. I, I mean, I did some, obviously I wasn't, but I did, I also took very conservative numbers. So, you know, for example, um, if you were to look closely at the line that contains pensions, I, you know, it has a fairly large jump, uh, from one year to the next. You know, that goes four or five percent, it's got a health insurance increase of three to five percent. You know, the, those may not always be the case, our increase in insurance this year was 1%. So, uh, you know, those are things that, that help offset those increases in just raw salaries from folks. But there's no doubt that that's a, that, you know, we have an awareness of that structural problem that we have. Um, and I think on, on the town side, they do too, as, as far as their contracts and, and their, uh, staffing is concerned, they've got the same, uh, you know, structural problems. And, you know, I could go on about prop two and a half forever, if you wanna, you know, you wanna commiserate about how that's structured. But, but, uh, you know, there's good and bad about it, I mean, it does pose some limits that are, like I say, good and bad. But, but nonetheless, it does, uh, you know, it i- it is a, a clear point of, of concern for us as we move ahead. That we keep in mind, uh, as we're hiring, as we're staffing, as we're thinking about the number of kids we have, and we're thinking about what's possible. You know, the, the fortunate thing in Amherst is there is some new growth, which helps make the overall increase from one year to the next, more than just the prop two and a half. You know, you get into some of the smaller communities that we partner with in our regional school district, you know, you know, Calum Leverett Schubert. Their new growth could be very, very small, and so they're really, you know, uh, two and a half is really kind of the reality for them, uh, on a year-over-year basis. Amherst has fortunately some new growth most years, uh, that helps. Draw that number up a little higher than two and a half percent. But that's certainly something as, as a district and any department, for that matter, in the, in the, in the, in the town, it's gotta, uh, keep that in mind. As to, uh, how to, how to stay within the, the, the revenue that's available to it, to the community.
Okay, Lynn, did you have something else?
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, this is sticking on the same theme on, uh, the issue of salaries. And I remember a conversation that I believe took place during the regional school budget discussions. About the possibility that someone like the town manager might be involved or his designee. Might be involved in contract negotiations, um, other than just with the town, but also on. At representing the town and the school, and I didn't know if that had happened or if it is happening. And then I have another question.
I really don't know. So unfortunately, the superintendent might have been able to answer that one, but I, I can't. I don't know if they've acted that way or not.
I mean, it's a, it's a huge burden to ask him, but at the same time, there did seem to be some interest during the regional school. Meetings of having the town kind of sitting at the table, if you will, during those negotiations. Um, perhaps, you know, I hate to say it, bringing some of the reality of something that, for instance, like the thing Mandy Jo just pointed out. The second thing is, and, and this really goes back to the broader question of enrollment trends. And, um, I, I understand it's a particularly in this year, it is a complete and free-flowing. Picture, okay? But from my standpoint, what would be most useful is to understand by school. By elementary school, by grade. What the enrollment trend has been over the last five years? And then update that, I mean, higher ed uses October as its date. I, I think I actually, elementary and secondary uses October as its date as well. Uh, I think that might be a federal number, a, a federal, um, kind of landmark. But just so we can understand, and it, and I think part of the understanding there is, again, um. You know, a class of 25 is not acceptable in Amherst. But at some point, how do we deal with a class where there might be two and a half sixth grades instead of two sixth grades? And how do we start thinking about that? And I'm particularly interested in that as Andy, um, has suggested, this is actually at the regional level. But, um, as we start looking at the impact of overall decline in birth rates in New England. And particularly, uh, how it affects Amherst. And it, it's continuing, I mean, it's just, we're, we're night, we're not nice warm states where people want to live.
Well, I think that regarding.
It's a, it's a request going forward.
Right, and, and we do, you know, look at the, the enrollment, uh, you know, by grade level, year-over-year. You know, we classically used a, a, what they call a survival model, a five-year survival model. The hardest one to predict is the kindergarten, because, you know, the only thing you've got is, is births in Amherst from five years previously, is the only number you've got. And that's, you know, uh. A lot of people with young children move frequently, I guess is the simplest way to say it. So it's, it's not a real indicator of, of, of what's gonna show up on your doorstep. I mean, the trends have been downward, uh, and I think they'll, they'll continue to be, uh, in that, that same range. At the same time, I, I personally see, and this is just my own observation, so it's a bit of just an opinion. But, you know, Amherst is making an investment in affordable housing. Um, and I think we will see some moderation of the decline by virtue of that to some extent. I don't think it's gonna be huge, um, but I do think it will. Moderate that, that decline a little bit, uh, for the, for the next few years. And I think depending on our housing policies in Amherst particularly, it's still a very attractive place to live, it's a fairly expensive place to live though. So, uh, it, it is, uh, you know, why we have a bit of a bimodal, uh, you know, economic picture in Amherst. Where we have, uh, fairly well-to-do and fairly not-so-well-to-do and not a lot of middle. And, um, and our schools reflect that in a lot of ways. And, and so I think that we definitely, you know, we definitely look at those kind of numbers regularly. We, you know, certainly in the process with the, with MSBA and the, uh, the building, one of the, the critical sort of first steps is, is trying to get. Good numbers of, of what do we think our future looks like for enrollments? Because they don't want to build a building that's way too big or way too small, uh, for a building that's gonna last a long time. So they, they try to go through a fairly arduous process to, to identify how many kids you're gonna have, uh, what your need at the buildings are gonna be. I know certainly when, when, when you have, uh, the structure we have and, and you try to, uh, have the right number of classes in each of the grade levels, uh, it gets tricky. You know, because, you know, you have that, uh, you've got, uh, 36 kids, uh, in say third grade. So you go, oh, that's two classes of 18, but if you had 30, would you go 215? You know, you, you, there are these weird breakpoints with adding a section or taking away a section. We try to be proactive in thinking about that, I mean, certainly at the kindergarten level in, in years past, we've done things where we've moved kids to a different building. Just because the, the, the need to keep those class sizes as small as we like to, uh, was, was such that that was the case. And we've done that and, and, um, you know, we generally. Stay within the targets that the school committee has set and, and, uh, and are able to have, you know, sort of reasonable section sizes in that regard. But, but there are certainly years that we have some, you know, some things where it's, it's, uh, it's pretty expensive, because you'll have, you know. 16 or 17 in a class instead of 20 or 21, and that, that makes that class a lot more expensive. There's just no way around, uh, saying it.
Doug, just has one quick follow-up, and that is, uh, if, uh, the school building committee in MS, yeah, in, uh. Go for the, um, larger, single larger elementary school to replace two current elementary schools. That will provide us more flexibility, I assume?
It will, I think, um, in the, in that, you know, it, it's, um, I mean, i- if you remember from the last, uh, time around, you know, there was some conversation about whether we should build, you know, should have a Catus Two school. And, you know, sort of cluster all of a certain grade, certain grade levels in single buildings, because that's gonna give you the most efficiency with how many sections you have. You know, uh, I, I don't know if the conversations will head in that direction again, but certainly. I, I don't know if the conversations will head in that direction again, but certainly a, you know, two schools versus three gives you a little more, uh, ability to keep those class sizes balanced than, you know, then two buildings does that better than three does as far as, uh, keeping those class sizes more on target with, with what you want and, and to be efficient with it. But don't know how that'll all play out ultimately.
Kathy, unless your question is along the same lines, uh, I know that Dorothy and George have their hands up, and then I was going to come back to you.
Mine was just an offer as part of the elementary school building project. There were estimates somewhat what you're asking for Lynn about class sizes in each of the cohorts, and I'd be glad to send that to everyone. There's a grid. That's it.
Cut the thumbs up from Lynn, so I, thank you for that suggestion. Dorothy? And then George?
Oh, I am concerned about some way for our school to get more control of what's going on. Because it, right now, uh, there's no limits unto, uh, terms of, of special ed. And the balance could tip, um, so that there's lack of equity for the other students. And of course, one of the reasons is incentive, you have a good program, people want to come to a good program. But an incentive to get other people into your school system is good kindergarten and, and universal pre-K. That would get people to say, I want to live in Amherst and go to that school. So I'm, right now, I just, it just seems you're just too reactive to what happens outside of you and without much, much way of controlling it. I have some comments on class size. In neighboring schools, eighteen seems to be the top number of students that most people want in elementary school. And at Holyoke Community College, they're having some in-person classes this fall. They're capping those classes at ten. So I, I think any class over eighteen is getting into, um, not good territory for, um, average students who will learn to be absolutely quiet as mice and say nothing if the, the bigger the class gets. So I'm just wondering if you've had thoughts about ways of getting a little bit more control over what kind of classes you have?
So, um, uh, I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit, you know, so, so, um, in, in speaking relative to, you know, special education, we're required to, you know, the term that gets used is FAP, which is, uh, Free and Appropriate Public Education. So some of the requirements by federal law, uh, for funding and, and support requires that you, uh, provide, what's necessary for a child to access the curriculum. And, and so that's, you know, so when the kid, you know, i- i- it shows up on our doorstep, we're, we have a, you know, an obligation. Uh, and that's immutable in some respects. There are things we can do, um, as far as our programming, uh, that, that, and, and we do look at, you know, do we, and, and we review regularly to try to keep those costs as, as, uh, reasonable as we can, given the, given the, uh, you know, expectations of what we're trying to do. And, and, you know, and again, I think that the, you know, if, if parents are going to shop around where they live, um, which they do, and people do that whether their kid has, uh, special needs or not, they should. You know, it's, it's a result of how our system's set up relative to property tax paying, you know, line share and state taxes paying the other part of it. But I think that, you know, we certainly look at, at how we're expending and, and how expensive our, our, our programming is and how best to, to make those as efficient as we can to keep them, uh, at a high level of, of performance, but also at a, at a, at as reasonable price as we can. So we're, we're routinely looking at those, those types of things, um, certainly. And, and, and obviously, you know, in, in some ways, uh, I would suggest, you know, some would talk about the fact that, that we're in a competitive market because of charter schools and the options and school choice, the, the options that family has to choose different schools. So, you know, we try to offer things that, that, uh, help retain our students in our buildings. And, and that's one piece of, among many reasons that, you know, we have the Comananté's program in, in Fort River is to help provide that, uh, differentiating factor that might encourage a family to, to be or, or move in, into Amherst. And so, you know, we are thinking of those kinds of things as, as best we can. But we do operate under some limitations, there's no doubt. But, but certainly, you know, if you have other suggestions, we're happy to hear them and, and think about it. Obviously, you know, there are, like I say, around like special education, we are compelled by law to, to meet those requirements and, and morally as well. But, but certainly legally and financially, we are, in, in, in addition.
Ju- just to follow up on the preschool question though. Have you thought of having more preschool as a way of making the district more attractive to more people?
I think, and I'm going to probably be outside my realm of expertise here, uh, but I believe so, is the short answer I would say there. I think we certainly look at it, I mean, there are some, you know, given the things that we're compelled to do, uh, and requirements we're compelled to meet, certainly. I think that, uh, you know, growing the, the, uh, the peers part of the program for the kids that don't have the needs is, is certainly an area that we've looked at and certainly continue to look at. And, and, uh, you have to strike the right balance as far as capacity to do that. But yeah, absolutely, I think that's something we look at.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to recognize George, and then I'm going to, um, actually, um, see if there's any public comment that people from the, um, who are attending the meeting from the public wish to, um, pause while we're on the subject of schools, because we can come back for a second round where we get to other programs. But, um, we, when we draw close to schools, um, I want to do that for George.
Yeah, just really not a question, and I apologize for that, but just two comments, though, if, if I'm off base here with my claims effect, I would very much like to be corrected. We're looking at enrollment data over five years, which is fine, but when I look at enrollment, I'm looking over twenty years. We, we're seeing a decline in enrollment that goes back to the beginning of this century. According to the numbers that I've put together, and I, they, perhaps they're not right, but I, I'm looking at a figure of like thirty-two percent decline from two thousand and one to the present, give or take. It's a, it's a steady decline that's been going on for quite some time, not just the last four or five years, is my reading of, of what I, I see. So that is deeply concerning. Just looking at four or five years, you think, oh, well, four percent, you know, whatever, but it's, it's, it's huge, is my sense. And if I'm wrong, I need to be corrected. The second is that I think there is a real need for a broader conversation. And I know that a number of us have spoken about this, both at the regional level and with the elementary school. We basically, it seems to me, have two groups, one that negotiates salaries and makes commitments that go on for years, and another group that's responsible for trying to figure out how to balance the budget. And those two really don't seem to be, um, you know, as far as I can see, in close conversation. And so here we are trying to figure out, as Mandy raised the question earlier, how is this sustainable over time? Combined with the decline in enrollments, um, I get really concerned. And as a representative of, of constituency, I, I need to be able to explain this to people and, and, and give them a sense of what, what the future is going to look like and explain to them, um, the costs that, that we're facing. And I'm, I'm saying that I can't do that, but right now I, I really struggle to be able to do that. So I'm hoping that over the summer, um, given all the other demands we have on us, that we'll have an opportunity, uh, at the elementary level for sure, but hopefully at the regional level to dive deeper and have a much deeper and frank conversation about some of these concerns. So that's just my two cents.
If I could just offer a little comment there, yeah, I, I, the, uh, so technically, the, the, uh, negotiations with the unions is done with the school committee. Formally go into the, you know, and obviously they get support from, from administration. The school committee gets support from administration to help, uh, them inform their, their negotiations and their, their process in that regard. But at the same time, uh, you know, the, the, the folks on the school committee, you know, are fairly aware of, of the constraints and would, under which the town operates. And, and it's critical, you know, to communicate to them, uh, if, if you, uh, would like to. I think it's important to communicate to them, uh, the constraints and, and the pressure you guys are feeling as counselors, relative to, uh, you know, their choices and their actions that they're making. But it is a true negotiation, so it, it is one where both sides have to, have to come to an agreement. And so, you know, I, I'll, I'll largely limit it at that, but it, but the school committee is the, is the primary, uh, negotiator with the union, and so those folks are elected officials of the town. And, and, and I would strongly encourage you or any citizens to engage with them on that process and, and, and provide them with information about, uh, you know, the, the constraints under which the town's operating and, and keep them aware of, of those limitations that, that, you know, the town faces is, you know. I mean, I think they are in, 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 I personally would suggest that they are pretty informed about that, but at the same time, you know, they don't do it every day like you guys do.
Just a quick follow-up, you would agree with me Doug, that the enrollment decline is something that's been going on for quite some time.
Yes, absolutely. There's no doubt that that's, that it, it has been a long, you know, the, the tricky, this year has been a bit abrupt in that, but, but yeah, the, the trend has been longstanding in Amherst, you know, and, and Western Mass generally, uh, that, that we've had a decline. And, and, uh, you know, the, the unfortunate thing from the standpoint of sort of the structure of your school is because you have class sizes of, say, twenty or twenty-five, you know, somewhere in that range. You have to lose that many students in that building in that grade to reduce by one, you know. So it, it tends to be the, the transitions between, uh, you know, sixty-five elementary school teachers to sixty-four, you know, those tend to come in steps. And so there's often, uh, it, it, it doesn't track quite as smoothly as the decline in enrollment. And so that's, that's a tricky thing to sort of see, you know, but if, if we were to look back, uh, in, at two thousand, two thousand and one and look at the number of like elementary classrooms we had versus now, I mean, we closed the school building in the meantime by virtue of that, the decline in enrollment, in, in about two thousand nine, two thousand and ten. So we'll, we may continue to see that, um, and I think that's a, that's, you know, for, for, for Kathy and, and the group on the, on the building committee, that's going to be a critical question as they look at those projections of enrollment. How big a building do we want, uh, and do we need as we look forward and, and try to build the right size to meet our needs now, but in the future and, 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 uh, you know, sort of hit the sweet spot?
Okay. I had said that I would, uh, pause for a moment after George answers, either the attendees, uh, would like to comment. I think one of the attendees is, um, on the telephone. And if that, um, uh, person wishes to raise their hand, star nine, uh, will cause, um, will let us know that you wish to be recognized. Athena, if you could, uh, allow Tony Cunningham to, um, join the meeting so that she can, uh, kind of, Tony, are you there?
Yes, thank you.
We, we can hear you, so, um, please, uh, mark your questions or comments.
So while I understand the council votes the bottom line, uh, you can still offer feedback on individual lines in the budget. Therefore, I'd like to request that you fully fund art and technology teachers in the FY twenty-two elementary budget. These are driven, these cuts are driven by a decision to replace two full-time positions at Crocker Farm with two-day-per-week positions. In addition, the proposal is that the art and technology teachers at both Wildwood and Fort River travel to Crocker Farm one day per week to teach there. This results in art and technology education at all three schools being reduced from five days per week to four days, and Crocker Farm children possibly having three different teachers for each subject. While each child is still expected to receive one forty-minute class per week, the reduction to four days will dramatically reduce the amount of time available for arts integration and additional projects at each school. I disagree that the enrollment has declined sufficiently to justify these changes. This fall, Wildwood will likely have nineteen or twenty classes, and with six teaching blocks in a day, that means the art and tech teachers will have only one open block to do everything else, including prepping for classes and working on any arts integration projects. Anecdotally, when I asked my child and her friends what the highlight of their fourth grade year was, they said it was the Native American Project, which was a collaboration between the classroom teacher, art, library, and technology. In third grade, their highlight was the Animal Adaptation Unit, which was also a fabulous example of arts integration. It is project-based learning like these units that engage many children in school and create lasting positive experiences. These are key differentiating factors to retain families in the district. In my opinion, it is short-sighted to make cuts to key differentiators. So if we agree that the, that we value these subjects, the question is how to keep them fully funded in a tough budget year. I will defer to you all to review where in the budget, um, funds could potentially be moved around. But I would like to suggest that you earmark seventy-five thousand dollars of the expected S R three funds, which are due to be announced in the next few weeks. We saw on Monday that the town manager plans to use one hundred thousand of the American Rescue Plan to pay for a capital projects manager. So there is precedent for using these expected funds to pay for staffing. I understand that the budget as presented does not include S R or American Rescue Plan funds as a separate pot of money. And lastly, on a separate issue, I noticed the Crocker Farm feasibility study improvements have been removed from the pending list in the capital improvement plan. And I would urge that you restore that item to the list, as it is a significant cost and will likely be needed to be spent in the next five to ten years. Thank you.
A follow-up, uh, I guess the one thing that, um, just so that people, um, there's been reference made to S R, which is an unusual name, that's Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And it has been included as a part of each of the federal stimulus assistance, uh, legislations, bills that have been passed in Congress over time, um, and plus the most recent is the American Recovery Act. And, uh, so the S R funds are, are part of that, were, were designated for elementary and secondary schools. And, uh, you know, the rules under which they, uh, those funds can be utilized is, I think, uh, something that is beyond me to explain, so I'm not even going to try. But, um, it, it is a, uh, the question of, uh, whether S R can replace, um, other budget cuts like this, or is there's a way to do it? I don't, I, I frankly do not have an answer to that from my own knowledge. Lynn, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just need to note that George will be leaving, but since Darcy has joined us, we still have a quorum with the council.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bernie Kubiak.
Uh, thanks, uh, to, to, um, couple of observations, actually. The school committee has broad, broad latitude in how it spends money that, um, it's appropriated by the town. To the point where the budget is, could actually be considered to be more of a suggestion than an actual spending plan. And I've, I've unfortunately seen that done, not with this school committee, but with, with another. I think one of the, one of the problems we have with, you know, two and a half was designed to start the beast. It wasn't designed to be helpful, it was designed to force governments to be smaller. Uh, that's a problem we always face, but looking at what's been said about the composition of the faculty right now, this might be an opportune time to raise the very difficult question of separating out steps and COLAs so that you don't get an automatic four, four and a half percent, um, salary increase each year. That might have a moderating effect, and, and there may be some ways to massage that and to, to make that happen. It's a difficult, uh, it's a difficult ask, and I, I, I'm saying that from, as someone who's tried. The other observation is that, we, we can't ask the school administration or the school committee to judge how we do land use. And the way we use land right now in town, the way town, town is organized, we don't have an ample supply of workforce or middle-income housing. And so we're not going to see, no matter how attractive we make preschool, we're not going to see, uh, an inflow into town because people can't afford it. One way that we can, and this will come up in other discussions, um, is to, uh, to make sure that we have, uh, we have an opportunity to move, um, that fifty percent of single-family homes that are rentals now, to move those folks out and make some of that housing available to families. And so that's going to get us into questions later about, we talked to the planning board about land use. And when we look at, um, uh, downtown development and the creation of more apartments. And when we look at, um, downtown development and the creation of more apartments. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, you.
Yeah, I, I want to do, um, a follow-up on the public comment we just had with a question, um. The timing, Doug, um, if, if we learn more about S R in the next, whatever, four weeks, five weeks, you know, before July 1, um, the, the art and technology piece, that the $75,000, which was a reduction in time. If, if there can be something done, because whether it's a direct offset of that or that the town can shift some money that was in another budget because of some relief somewhere. What does the timing of that have to look like if you were, um, I wasn't sure whether you were reducing a whole slot, so saying goodbye to a person, um, in terms of when you give, uh, a termination notice or we're reducing you to part-time. So the, we, the way you were reconfiguring the hours to be able to staff the crocker. We've, we've gotten more than just this one comment on this. We just got another one today. But we've had several coming directly to the council to try to do something, you know, and I don't know what the school committee heard. So it's, it's a question of if the finance committee said, I know we can't put the money, but we said, Paul, we're hearing this. Can you, as the manager, figure out some way for this piece? So I'm just looking for timing, a, a timing question.
Yeah. So, so just to give you a little, uh, piece of this, uh, at, at Crocker Farm, the, the two staff that are, are, uh, there in those roles are ones leaving the district, ones retiring. So no individual is being, uh, is being let go for that purpose, um, will probably, I believe that the strategy at the moment, not a, not a hundred percent sure, would be to ask that, uh, folks in our other two buildings take a day of, you know, their current full-time position. Uh, but it would require hiring a point four, uh, for each of those. Um, you know, we sometimes partner with, you know, other districts like Pelham that are smaller, that have people that are working, uh, partial, uh, in those, in those similar areas. You know, I don't know if, if the, if, if a person at Pelham would be able or willing to do that, or we would have to reach out to, you know, Shrewsbury Leverett or any, you know, Hadley, uh, you know, any number of schools that have, folks in those, those sorts of, uh, areas to, to hire a part-time, uh, person. So that would be for the current structure of what we have. As far as, you know, the ability to, 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 to hire and plan for, for, uh, you know, a, a full-time person. I think that the, the window of opportunity is there to, you know, to talk about hiring staff is, is there, um, uh, as far as the mechanics of, of, um, of the budget, uh, you know, if, if the school committee were to reconsider and, and change, you know, well, if they had, you know, advice that, that funding was available and, and that they were willing to take that up and change that, and, uh, then I think that it's possible to do that. I just, you know, I don't want to commit them to it or anything like that, but I think that, uh, the, the, the town budget, because it doesn't have to be passed until, you know, before July 1, you've got a little more time. Um, you know, the, the mechanical steps would have to happen between, you know, the manager of the school committee and ultimately the council, but I presume that they would be, it would be possible, I believe, but, you know, a little out of the realm of my expertise on some of that, you know, specifics in that regard, but, and I don't know, I have no idea of, of the school committee's mindset relative to this, or, or by fairly superintendents as far as if that were to be, uh, actively, uh, pursued. I don't know. I haven't had the conversations about that. So I don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo the comments of, uh, some of the, uh, previous, uh, speakers. And, um, when we had our conversation about the budget guidelines so many months back, we talked quite a bit about sustainability, um, as being an important piece of, um, the budgets and, and the town finances going forward. And we also discussed, you know, two major drivers of sustainability, especially for the schools, which were the declining enrollment and the increased, uh, costs of salaries every year. And I think it's very clear that those two issues are still very much the issues that we need to be wrestling with. I think special education may be another issue. I don't see it as such a, a big problem right now, but if it continues to grow, if the costs continue to grow over time, it could become a third issue of sustainability. But I think right now the biggest issue are really issues are the enrollment and then the people costs, basically. Um, so I, I, I do echo those, those comments, and I think, as I said, I think that's where we need to be focused, both as a committee and as, you know, a town on, on how we're going to sustain, you know, the, the quality of education that we have.
Doug, anything I could, uh, that just reminds me of a point, and this, this goes back to when Andy and I served on finance committee a million years ago. But, but it's a one I'll bring up at this point, just because I think it's, uh, important relative to, to this conversation. And it's not necessarily specific to the, 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 uh, comment by the, by the caller. And that is, is, is the use of one-time money, uh, to support your operating budget. And so with something like the S R funds in particular, or other resources that are, are, uh, not recurring on the, on the revenue side, in other words, uh, you know, there's not a, a, a stream of, of revenue to continue to support it. You find yourself, uh, back to the same problem, uh, just delayed by a year or so. So to go back in history a little bit with the town of Amherst, we, we got a grant, oh goodness, probably 15 years ago or more, probably 20 years ago, and it ended 15 years ago, uh, that allowed for the hiring of, uh, four or five firefighters. And, uh, the, the difficulty with that grant was, is when that grant ended, uh, we essentially had to let those people go. We didn't have the budget to, it was not a great budget year, and so we didn't have the opportunity to, uh, fold those or factor those, those new salaries into our, our, uh, public safety budget. And that was a really difficult conversation at town meeting, quite frankly. Um, and I think that there, there are grants we have and, and town has had over time where it's a, it's a smoother transition. In other words, they build in that you are taking on a bit more and more of, of those kind of costs as the grant, uh, progresses through. But that is, that is one of those concerns. Anytime you have sort of, you know, one-time money like a grant or, or, uh, something from, uh, reserves that you, you fund is that then how do you solve the problem the following year or two years down the line or, or that sort of thing? So when you talk sustainability, that's certainly a factor that's got to be kept in mind, um, as we, as we consider these kind of options.
Good point, Doug. Even, uh, reliving old times, not always easy. Uh, Mandy?
Yeah, I, I kind of want to echo what Bernie said, um, about we pass a bottom-line budget for the school committee. Um, or, and frankly, for most of the town. And how the school committee who are elected, just like the town council, decides to spend that budget is not something we as a town council should probably get too far into the weeds in, I would say. And I think we have to remember that the school committee was presented with a budget number that Dr. Slaughter and Dr. Morris have been presenting to us today. The town manager did not change that number. Um, and they were fully aware that that seven, that one of the cuts planned was to arts integration programs. And they still passed that budget and asked us to pass that budget. Um, and so I, I get very concerned when we're looking at essentially doing policy when policy, on school committee cuts, when policy isn't on school committee cuts is not what we as town counselors were elected to do. And I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to echo that because that always concerns me. Um, and that's, um, you know, at the start of the meeting, I said, we actually have a way to increase a school committee budget that, that we come back to. It's not just regional schools. But it requires the school committee to ask us and recommend that we do so. But we are present, we've been presented with their recommended budget. We haven't been presented with a budget that they passed that then our town manager reduced by $100,000. He passed through the budget they passed. Um, and so that's their recommendation to us. And I think we have a, an, in some sense, an obligation to recognize that they were elected to decide whether those cuts were okay with them and pass a budget on to us, and they, they did that.
And, uh, thank you, Mandy. Um, you're going back to, to remind me again of the provision in chapter 44, section 32, which provides the, uh, it has to originate from the school committee, the request to increase budget, and it has to pass by two-thirds of the council in order to increase the school budget, and that is that one anomaly. However, uh, is, uh, since you were on the charter commission, charter commission did not include that in the charter. And, uh,
It is part of state law and the charter has, um, as allowed by state law.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. Um, so going back to Dorothy, then your hands up and then, uh, because I want to try and spend a few more minutes on the schools and then we need to get on to the other subjects.
And I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, I do think that Mandy's point is very interesting. We have two elective boards, both responsible to the people of the town to represent their needs. And, um, both trying to do it. So that's why I kind of get the second run, but I do, I do, it's an important point. So my question is, um, why was there no school choice last year? Um, I, a school choice brings in money to the district and it wasn't offered. So, you know, you lost a couple, you lost potentially a number of students who would have come in last year.
So, um, yeah, I'll take that, I'll take that question. So the, the, the goal with school choice generally is not to increase your costs. And so what we would like to do generally in any given year is the students that we take in would be filling in slots. So let's say we have small class sizes in Wildwood and we try to, you know, level up those classes. And, and so we didn't feel at the time that we had, uh, any space for new students. We certainly kept all the students we had, so we still had school choice revenue. Uh, and so that's the evaluation we make each year as far as, uh, our taking on students is can we do it a way that, that will, uh, generally, you know, uh, augment from a resource standpoint, but not necessarily, uh, create much expense for us. So, um, you know, that's the rationale we go with it. But again, it's, it's a bit of, uh, as, as is always the case with a lot of these things is, you know, a bit of, uh, uh, forecasting, a bit of crystal ball reading is necessary because you have to make the decisions fairly early relative to the, the reality on the ground when school starts.
Thank you.
I think the added piece to that is that, um, the amount of money you get from school choice, uh, is $5,000. That's what the sending district transfers to the receiving district. And $5,000 is well under the cost of educating a student. So that if you take school choice to the point of having to add staff, which takes in more, um, adds more cost than the revenue coming in, you get back to the point that why Doug is making a pretty made. So Bernie and then Kathy.
Yeah, just more of a point of information would be helpful if we, we're going to talk about S R or any other, any other source of funds other than what we raise and appropriate. Um, it would be helpful to know if, what the ground rules around those are, if those are simply going to go to the school committee. Yes, her funds are simply going to go to the school committee for the school committee's use, whether a grant is simply going to go to the town manager. Uh, it would be helpful to know who's, uh, who's driving the bus in terms of those funds. Uh, and not make the assumption that this is, that S R money would be necessarily appropriated by, yeah, council.
Yeah, I don't know if Sean or Paul have an answer, want to answer that.
Uh, I can speak briefly on that. Um, I think Bernie's right. I think, um, S R money goes straight to the schools. That does not come through the town. It goes through Title I, so it's right, Doug, or it's goes through Title I allocation. So, um, that goes for straight through, um, to the schools. Um, ARPA money, we imagine will be similar to how CARES money came in, um, but we're not sure until we see the, the detailed rules. Which again, we hope to see, um, along with the S R money any week now, um, but they've been saying that for, I think MMA had a article like four weeks ago saying detailed guidance coming soon. Um, so their definition of soon is, uh, four to six weeks, I think. So we're really eager to see what those rules are and, um, and we'll update the committee as soon as we get them.
Kathy, did you have anything? Your, your hand was up.
No, I just forgot to take my hand down. Sorry.
Okay. So, uh, I think that we've, uh, spent a fair amount of time in the schools. I do want to get on, have some, uh, time for the remaining agenda items having to do with social services. And, uh, so I wanted to see if there are any last questions. Mandy, your hand is, you, you had something else?
It's not for the school. It's, it's more about, um, I wasn't sure whether today would be the community, uh, discussion on community responder because it was not really included in any of your finance committee agendas. So I'm trying to figure out where that portion of community services, when that portion of community services will be discussed.
Yeah, actually, we're going to take that up as soon as we, uh, finished it. I think the, um, because that is, uh, not a, there's not a clear answer to that. I think the committee needs to discuss that. So just see, can load us up on schools so that Doug can get on top of things with his deck, because we really appreciate you're spending this much time with us, Doug. Uh, Pat, did you have something?
Uh, yes, my question doesn't have to do with the schools. I'm just, uh, asking a budget clarification. So thank you, Doug, Mr. Slaughter, as always, for your good work.
Okay. So, uh, nothing else to, this point on the schools, Kathy, you would, uh, I know you had a long list, so I think, uh, but you had already sent them and got some responses already, I know. So anyway, uh, thank you very much, Doug. I appreciate it and thank, uh, Mike, that, and, um, I'm sorry that we got messed up with the, um, uh, posting having been missed, but, uh, you're having to put it off for a day. I appreciate the flexibility and sorry that, uh, he wasn't able to stay with us longer, but we understand that that's he was, is an important competing source. So, uh, anyway, thank you very much, Doug.
Welcome. You're welcome. Thank you guys for having us and, and we appreciate the time you, you've allowed for us and certainly reach out to us if you have other questions. Thank you.
So let me get back to the question that was just raised, um, about the, the community responder program. It, it technically is under social services and therefore it is on the agenda for today's meeting. But I actually had been thinking about that for a while because of a couple of additional factors. One is that, uh, we, um, haven't seen the report from the working group yet. And, um, you know, it doesn't, it looks like the timing is going to be difficult. We might see the report, but it won't have been presented to the council for council discussion. If we, um, before, we probably have to address it in this committee, given the fact that we have a time limit on our work too. So, but that's a problem. Um, one of the ideas that I had come up with was to at least postpone it until, um, the day that the police budget is heard because they tie together, um, in, in a, uh, obvious way that I won't have to, that I don't really, I don't have to state. Um, and, uh, I think that we might have the working group report by that date, though it won't have been, as I say, discussed in the council at that point. So I had sent something to, uh, Sean and Paul to ask, uh, their thoughts about, um, that scheduling and, uh, probably should just clarify that now. So, um, because it sounds like that's, um, why you might want to stay with the meeting or not. So is there any comments from the committee and Paul?
So I, I think you should not talk about it today because the Community Safety Working Group isn't here, and I think they should be, they would want to be present. Uh, they have, um, I know they've posted an extra meeting for an early next week to work on their report to get it to you sooner. Their anticipation is that it would be discussed on on May thirteenth, when you talk about the police budget. That's their expectation, but that was not. You know, you can make your decision when you want to bring it up, but they were saying, oh, public safety is going to be discussed on May thirteenth. We should be prepared for that. So I think I think having clarity on when it is going to come up would be helpful to everybody. But it shouldn't be today because clearly nobody's ready for it today.
So I guess my question to the rest of the finance committee is. Is there any objection to postponing the discussion of the. Social Services section, which is really just that part of the. New services budget. Until the thirteenth when we. And then add it to that agenda. And I do note that that will make for a busy agenda that day. But all of our agendas turn out to be busy agendas.
I think that is absolutely appropriate. I think it would be. Really not appropriate for us to have that discussion without some significant modification. To the Community Safety Working Group. And I also would suggest that we set a time specific in the on that day. When we will have that discussion. And furthermore, I think we should actually. Have some level of interaction with them about whether or not they're available during these hours. Since they have generally been meeting at five o'clock and perhaps for the purpose of this discussion, we need to be more flexible in our time.
So thank you for that suggestion. Maybe Sean or Paul can check with them just to make sure that that works and. But if there's no objection from the committee and I'll look for hands raised to to indicate. That somebody wants to be raised to object, then we will not discuss it today. And as chair that. I will add it to the agenda of the thirteenth if it's agreeable to the working group and they can have representation. Present and feel that you're ready to present the discussion. So seeing no objection, then that is what the plan is and we will focus then on senior center. And veteran services for which are the two parts of the budget that. We can discuss today. Yes, Lynn.
My concern is that so in other words, we're saying finance committee, which could be committee of the whole. Is going to have the discussion with the Community Safety Working Group before they present to the council. This is, it's becoming very difficult all the way around because they've actually said at the last meeting. That they would like to present at the council on the twenty fourth. Which sets back even later than the seventeenth. I don't I don't have a great solution to resolve this. I just am saying that seems a little backward to have them come to the finance committee meeting before coming to the council.
Yeah, no, I think that's a problem. And of course, what we're. Having to deal with and maybe we should take this up separately and then come back to the committee. Either by email or next Thursday with further report on this. But. Our last day of budget review. Is the twentieth. So we're still out of sync on time and then we have a meeting for the twenty. Excuse me, we have one meeting left, I guess, who's the twenty seventh?
Yeah, Andy, we could, I mean, we could still do the different departments on the thirteenth. But we could also have a follow up conversation on the twenty seventh because I think there is. I think that meeting is not scheduled to be a full meeting the way it is right now. It just has conservation development, which I think would probably be a. Maybe an hour and a half for those three groups. So it's possible that something we put on to the to that meeting on the twenty seventh.
What do we have on the twenty fifth? Because we have a finance committee meeting that day too. What it.
That's general government and there's a lot of sort of smaller departments in that group. Oh, sorry. It's whatever the one right before the twenty seventh. Let me get my calendar.
DRC meeting. That's why you don't have one scheduled for the twenty fifth.
Yes, I think the twentieth is when we're doing. Okay.
I just want to say, because Lynn asked, since I'm not a finance member, that if it's not getting discussed today and it sounds like it's not, I'm going to. Cut out of the meeting and leave it now, which I believe leaves the council without a quorum.
Yes.
Then in that camp, in that case. Town council meeting is adjourned. The finance committee meeting continues. Thank you. I have another question that's not related to Community Safety Working Group. So whenever you're ready, but Pat.
Okay, Pat.
Yeah, I just want a budget clarification. I was, I understand that as a town council, we can only just.
Pat, I think you're frozen.
Yeah. Athena, let us know if there's something that's needs to be resolved. We'll get back to Pat's question when she's available to ask it. So Linda, do you have anything else to add or your hands? Because your hands are still up.
It's my other, the other thing I want to talk about and I I'm more than willing to wait on that, whatever. But let me go ahead, since Pat's. One of the things that we have said is that at each of the town council meetings. As we're going through this budget, there would be updates. And at the same time, I have been under the impression that.
Excuse me, I got kicked out somehow. So.
Whoops, she got kicked out again.
Do you got kicked out again?
Yeah, anyway. In in two ways, I need to ask this question. In the past, we have been. The finance committee report has often been much more very pretty extensive when it came to reporting on the budget. And yet, some people have felt that that really wasn't as necessary. So I I'm asking, what is our expectation for a written report? At the end of the budget review reviewed by the finance committee? And the second question I'm asking is, what is the expectation? Or what expectation do we as a finance committee want to set for what it is we will report on? On the seventeenth and on the twenty fourth of May.
Like an answer to my question, I apologize. I seem to have gotten thrown out of the meeting.
So go back with you, restate your question and then we'll come back.
Well, I'm trying to understand. Last year, when we wanted to, we had to freeze two positions and that gave us some flexibility. Because I understand that as a council, we cannot decrease a line item and then move money. However, it does say in the charter that upon the recommend, except on the recommendation of the town manager, we can't. Increase. So if the town, that puts a lot of responsibility on Paul to make recommendations. About changing funding. And I think that there's going to, there needs to be quite a bit of conversation about changing. Funding for the CREST program. And so I'm trying to understand how we go about that. Because it seems to me that yes, Paul makes the recommendation, but we need to give him feedback. About what we think should be happening and then he can do, he can make his decision. So I'm trying to understand how this is going to work and when we're going to do this.
We need to have the discussion of the program first before we can.
But we can move money and and a line item could be increased upon the recommendation of the town manager. That would be based on what we were asking him to do.
If the town manager, it's my understanding that if the town manager makes that request, then we can consider it otherwise.
Right, but we can give him feedback and input that might help him decide to make or not make that decision. And I'm trying to understand, when do we get to do that?
Know that there's a specific name, time. That might be just during discussion. I don't know if Paul has any comments on that.
And Andy, can I add real quick? You know, I think there will, I think we have time set aside at the end of this process for sort of a discussion, sort of a final discussion of the finance committee. Around the report and that that's after all the departments have come and spoken and you've finished your review. So that might be one time, sort of when the full picture has been discussed with each of the departments for people to share their thoughts.
Okay, but up until that point, with a recommendation from the town manager, funds could be moved around within the budget. Is that correct?
So the.
So if I wanted to take ten thousand dollars and move it to public safety. And I and we, when can I have that conversation with the town manager? And so I'm assuming now I would have it during the public safety presentation, right? And then I could say and or the council could say, well, we really want that ten thousand dollars. And then if Paul makes that recommendation, it can be moved. Is that correct? Okay. Okay. Because we've been locked into the image that we had no ability to affect Paul and I think that's incorrect.
Right. And and Paul and I'll talk through this more just to give more sort of. Organized feedback as well. I I think what what we've said makes sense, but I just want to think through it more and we'll report back to the whole group on that.
Thank you very much.
Andy, could I ask, I just want to also just remind that Mary Beth is here for senior services. And I know Lynn had a a good question about what the final report will look like, but I wonder if maybe we could hold that till after Mary Beth goes.
I think that makes sense. So Mary Beth, welcome, finally getting here. And we appreciate your patience and appreciate the good work that's been going on at Senior Center. Is there any introductory comments that you would like to offer?
Yes, yes, there is. Certainly. So first of all, thank you, everyone. And here at the Senior Center, we are, if nothing else, patient. So I I appreciated watching the process unfold and this is much like my day. So I have no, I have no qualms. But there are a couple of highlights that I think are probably not as clear in the service statistics that I think you would be interested in. That might just sort of inform your governance. And the first is, I think it's really, it's been very interesting to watch the discussion around elementary schools. Because I think that this parallels that and and I think it's it's more to the point around demographic changes. And so I just would like you to have in your awareness as you are looking at town planning for the years to come. Is that we really need to be considering a plan for aging in Amherst and the demographics underlie that. So in twenty twenty ten, seniors defined as people over sixty were thirteen percent of the population. And by twenty twenty five, within Hampshire County, it will be thirty percent. So we are certainly graying in the valley. We are graying in Amherst and we are graying in the state of Massachusetts. And I think that that is important because that change in that key demographic also has impact on housing, on services. Aging in place. And so I just think it's it's not necessarily an immediate state of alarm. But as your elementary population and enrollment decreases, certainly the needs for people to age in place will increase. And I think that, you know, even statistically within the country, you know, two out of ten people feel like they need help in their home to age in place. And so the social services, while we are a small and mighty department, I think that there might be some discussion moving forward. And and more importantly, I wanted to just link that to one of my key objectives coming up for this year, which is that we're going to be exploring. Trying to obtain designation as an age friendly and dementia friendly community, which will allow us to really look at what are the social determinants of health? That are important to our community to age and how we can foster it to be a more inclusive, age wise community. And it's not a layout of funds. What it really is, it's a lens and perspective for making decisions. So if you were going to be building a park, for instance, and you're going to be installing benches, it would simply be that you'd be thinking that these benches would also have elbow rest. So people could push off to get up. And then if you're installing three or four of them, you might put one in a quiet area for somebody with dementia. So we're not talking about a capital expenditure. We're really talking about a philosophy of embedding. That sort of caretaking within the decisions that the town makes. So so that's the first one. Secondly, I think that I would really love to highlight our efforts around diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think that I I I believe I mentioned this the last time, but really from the day that I've arrived. The town manager has been really clear with me that he wanted to see a more inclusive senior center. And has been a real supporter with me in terms of recruiting people both for the council on aging. And in terms of any ability that we had to recruit staff that reflected our community more dynamically. So within our council on aging, we now have four out of nine persons who represent the BIPOC community. And and that's tremendous. And the other piece is that while I wasn't able to bring in full time staff just because of our staffing patterns. And and folks are remaining because they like working here, but I was able to apply for and get some full time grants. And all of the individuals who filled those positions were BIPOC individuals. So we had persons who didn't speak English. They represented a variety of cultures within the community and it really has brought a real air of inclusivity. And also welcome within the senior center. And we had folks who were able to speak Spanish to our Spanish speaking clients who come here. We also, for the first time, we are hosting a master's in social work student. And so, you know, having the ability to flex the identities of the people that comprise the senior center. I think makes it more appropriate for a community center setting. So and while numbers alone represent simply a representation diversity. And aren't necessarily a measure fully of what we want to do, it is in fact a start. So the piece that we're really looking at for the future is within diversity, equity, inclusion is looking at how do we measure inclusion? And that's been something that I think a lot of researchers have been looking at. How do you make sure and gather the experiences that make somebody feel either included or excluded? So going forward, one of the most wonderful things, last time I came here, I thanked you for remodeling the senior center. And what I'd like to say this year is that we have this wonderful blank canvas upon which we are going to carefully and thoughtfully. Reopen and scale up in a way that makes us feel like a different place, a place that is multicultural, a place that is inviting. That the artwork, that the values are displayed in a way that doesn't signal and flag white space. So so that's where we're going in the immediate future. And then lastly. I think that I I would like to just share with you our scaling up plans to reopen. Because I know that you probably are getting questions about that. And we have really are guided, of course, always by the science and the safety that has been promulgated, not only from CDC and the state. But also the Massachusetts Council on Aging. And there are a number of sector specific guidelines. Which will allow us to to scale up, but to really scale up in a way that is safe and it will be gradual. And that's going to be the next message that I'll be sharing with our senior community. Because I think that some folks might think when we reopen, it will be back to the way it was and that won't be immediately possible. I think in the summer months, the, you know, the guidelines around having classes is we have to have people stay outside. They're going to be admitted ten minutes before a class begins. They can't gather in the hallway. They can't gather in the lobby ways. Then we are required to have thirty minutes at least between each class to allow for cleaning and for airing out of rooms. So we'll be gathering those sort of guidelines. So we'll be gathering those sort of guidelines and making sure that we're offering socialization and also exercise. Because we do know that we've experienced cognitive decline and physical decline. So we're preparing and speaking with teachers. But I think underlying everything, what what I want you to know is we can set out services and programs. But we have to simultaneously work with sort of the psychosocial aspect of what it has done to people to isolate and shelter for a year. Because even in the conversations, as people express enthusiasm, they are expressing grave anxiety. And it's almost like a re-entry program. So we're bringing in some experts, Dr. Starr, who's a gerontologist and also. Our friends over at UMass who do gerontological psychology and be doing some programs that will put on Amherst media around. How do we reengage and how do you judge what's safe and appropriate? So I think you'll see a twin track of trying to support people emotionally and also adding in the programs and seeing what happens. And then to end on a high note in the intro, we are almost at ninety percent for vaccination rates for individuals sixty-five and above. And about eighty-three percent for those seventy-five and above. So I just wanted to do a huge shout out to everybody in town from the town manager. His staff, the COVID ambassadors, the health director, Emma Dragon, my own staff, I have to tell you, they were up twenty-four seven. Doing, we did, they did over two thousand appointments, waking up at midnight, setting their alarms. We we looked for any possible open lanes. I know Robert's on here. I read his his editorial. We lived it, all of the points that that he brought out about how how crazy the the state and really heedlessly, they they rolled things out. But we were able to find workarounds with everybody, a huge team effort. So I think our seniors are looking healthy and we're looking forward to serving them in greater capacity.
Thank you. It has been a difficult year and Senior Center has certainly been doing your part to try and. Make it work for our, for the population that you serve. And I know you've made contributions personally also to other parts. And like our homeless population. Appreciate all you've been doing and. I'm gonna turn it second, see if there are questions from other people in the committee. I shared with Sean yesterday that I had. Been assigned the responsibility as the member assigned to community service programs. And went over the budget and for the sections that we were going to be talking about. And I had one observation and you sort of touched on it actually and something that you said in your remarks. About your success in obtaining a grant. That would allow you to bring some additional people in for. Helping out. And one of the things that. Has always been evident to me in reviewing the senior center budget is that. We have a small staff that does an awful lot and it does an awful lot. Because it's able to grab hold of money that's not town money, but money from other sources. And that the way the budget is presented in the current. Budget book, while I have really appreciated changes, the one thing that I missed was is that. I thought that the. Nature of in size of the grants and the outside funding that we receive both from state services. From Island Valley Elder Services and just grants and donations is not as evident. And this budget format is, it was in prior budget formats. And the the grants are actually listed, you know, substantially later in a separate section of the book. Just as part of the grant listings. So I I I recognize that didn't end up being too much of a question other than that I thought that. The listing of the grants was actually omitted donations, which was also another major part of the. Work because we have the friends of the senior center and I just didn't feel that we had full picture of. What the funding is that supports the work, a lot of it because Senior Center and the Council on Aging got and. Work hard to make it happen. So just wanted to share those thoughts with the committee since I had. Sent it to Sean after the, after I had reviewed budget.
Yeah, and Andy, just following up on that, that's definitely something we can build back in. You know, we don't do it for all departments, but I think your point is that it's it's such a mate, you know, sort of an oversized. Part of what the Senior Center, where their funds come from, that it you need that to see the whole picture. So that's definitely something we can add back going forward.
So. Questions from other members of the committee or comments? Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to to agree with Sean and and you, Andy. I think it's important for. Not only the people, the members of this committee, but the people of the town to understand where the money comes from for the senior center. And have it all in one place. So it's easy to see, especially since it is sort of a diverse set of 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 funding sources.
Kathy?
I I just wanted to say thank you to Mary Beth. What you, both what you're leading to talk about where where we are in demographics and also the work. When I look at what with your staff you've been doing, she she grabbed me and my mom when my. She was still alive, watching my mother vote because a ninety-eight-year-old was, or ninety-nine-year-old actually was tottering into to vote. And to take a picture. But just so a comment on the healthy aging, you're probably already connecting to people. But the New York Academy of Medicine in New York has been doing a healthy aging project for quite some time. They had a lot of geriatricians working with them. And one of the things they were doing is they were doing a lot of work in libraries. When they were in the middle of the day doing book clubs and other things to get seniors out of their house. I mean, so it was particularly targeted and with what you talked about benches going around doing, looking at every bench and whether it has something you can get up. And it it has made in a big city like New York a huge difference because even pre-COVID, people were often very isolated. They, especially if they didn't have transportation. So just trying to think of the resources we have and to the extent. Our little North Amherst library up here does get expanded, which is the plan. And there'll be space for that up here. And I met several very isolated people over time whose elder kids had moved out of town. And we're looking for some ability to join, join in. So I really think what you're doing is fabulous. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bernie? Yeah, as the the old, both literally and figuratively human services person. I I welcome the the age-friendly designation. And I I can recall a couple of years ago, having a conversation with with Dave Stevens. And he was asking me, where's Amherst on this? So now we know Amherst is, Amherst is in. So thank you. To follow up on one of Kathy's observations, though, I'm concerned about our ability to outreach. To elders who are are homebound or isolated in our ability to address programs. One of the things I I ran into, I was managing Deerfield frequently, was the question of hoarding. And a question of of being able to assist people doing small tasks. Changing the light bulbs, mowing the grass. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about what. You and your staff may be capable of, or where you're going to need some help in doing that kind of outreach.
I think that as we start to reopen a bit more, we have a tremendous volunteer base. We have over a hundred and eighty volunteers. When we are fully operational. So those folks do a lot of that kind of work of, you know, assisting somebody. A lot of times it has to do with technology. They can't get their TV to work or a clicker to work. We also partner extensively with Amherst neighbors. So that's also one of my objectives. And, you know, they have already started some of their contactless services. And we speak nearly daily in terms of referrals of folks who might need someone to go for a walk with them. Or someone who just wants to have a visit on a porch as well. So they have about a hundred and sixty members right now. And they're trying to grow that base and really partner with us because, you know, you need a fleet of people out there doing this kind of work. And when you speak as to the most vulnerable people, quite, quite honestly, most of the most vulnerable people, we serve in some capacity. Through either social services and also through our meal service. So by that I mean the hot meals, meals on wheels, and also we have a free-to-go lunch. And, you know, we claim a lot of people through that program. And certainly our most frail and vulnerable are those individuals who are on that program. They've been identified by a variety of social service providers. And we see them every day. I have to say, even as that program maybe doesn't draw as many people for a congregate setting here in Amherst as other communities. The value to us of the daily contact is people who are our most frail and vulnerable. Being able to know when people are in and out of the hospital and what they might need. They're discharged at five PM on a Friday. And I know they're not going to have food. You know, it it's incredible. So so those are some of the ways. And it's certainly not that we have the the ability that we're mapping everyone and we're meeting everyone's needs. The more that we let people know that we're here, that we're available. I work with you. One of the, when you mentioned working with homeless. One of the wonderful things about COVID, the upside is that I've been able to work in a variety of roles, either whether it's been food insecurity. Working with the chamber and the Latina families. We've worked with twenty of them per month. We've been able to build some deeper networks and also trusting relationships so that when people of any age, quite frankly, when they need help. They come here to the bank center. I mean, we we had that yesterday where a young family is living in a hotel. And they have children and they came here looking for some help. So so I think that the more we're out there, the more it spreads our name and our good works. I think it's it's also about. Consistency and persistence and being willing to be flexible. We've done mobile office hours. So I think, again, we're always looking to redesign and to be flexible and not just in a center. So I hope that that helps.
It does. Thank you.
This is a question from Mary Beth, picking up from a topic you've spoken on. When I drove by the green today, I noticed there seemed to be a lot of picnic tables and chairs out. And using myself as a case in point, I've got terrible balance and I can't get in and out of some of those things very easily. And so I thought, you know, when we're choosing furniture for a park, maybe we should consult you. Because there are some table chair sets which would be much better for older people or people with lousy balance than others. And that that, you know, so it's not just price, it really is design. It's design that matters. So I'm just wondering if you've actually thought of those table and chair designs or whether you have any outside your center that.
So we don't have any in our immediate area, in our patio area, because it just doesn't facilitate it. But in the nearby Boltwood area, they do bring picnic tables that get dropped. And I think that they were primarily for the restaurants. And I, they're, they are are different in design than the ones you're referring to. Cause I was just walking the green yesterday when I noticed those as well. So I do think that your point is well-taken and is the precise reason why age-friendly, dementia-friendly matters. And can make a small impact that actually makes a difference in quality of life. So, yeah, and that the ones that I believe have been in the immediate area of the senior center are ones in which. They have, there there's a a free entry. So there's nothing that sort of binds up between the leg and the table. So folks can, because lots of seniors sit at them, quite frankly. Yeah, when they get there to go lunch, then they go and they sit at the picnic tables. So.
Well, thank you.
Kathy? Your hands up.
Forgot to take it down. I didn't think, yeah, taking it down.
Okay. I guess since we've been talking about American Recovery Act and with other. Parts of the budget, this may be a question for Sean as much as anyone, but. Some of the extraordinary expenses we've incurred in trying to serve seniors in this very difficult time. Where we're doing a lot of homebound delivery of meals because we can't have congregant meals in the way that we. Used to. Gets to additional expense and if we've been able to tap into any of those funds to help offset those expenses.
Yeah, not from the, not from the American Rescue Plan, but from CARES. When, if we've had a additional expenses, those have been charged to CARES. So I believe there have been some additional expenses for. Delivery of food is one area where we redirected some staffing to to deliver meals. I've worked with Mary Beth on sort of the meal. Program that we did in December where we provided meals to needy families. I can't remember off the top of my head, there were any other additional expenses. But anything additional we can cover out of CARES, it just has to be unbudgeted and related to COVID. Mary Beth, do you remember any other?
So we also purchased like small tables for all of our consumers to have outside of their home. Because it became a real problem that you have to do a contactless delivery. So you you can't hand off because your arms aren't going to be long enough and you can't put a meal down on the ground because someone can't reach down there. They're going to topple over and it's it's just, it's inhumane frankly to put food on the ground for somebody. And so we bought plastic tables for all of our consumers. And I'll say that I I was able, I tapped into a dislocated restaurant worker's grant. And that's how I got four of our drivers. And then the town manager helped and allowed a whole host of staff to be reassigned. And and helped us out who were, whose main positions or jobs from LSSC and also the parking management enforcement. Individuals, they had less to do, so they helped us every day with lunches. So.
Is there a problem now as we're moving back into actually having people park and pay at parking meters? Getting our home deliveries done?
No, because the, my my other sort of carrot to get people to deliver meals honestly is the tax work-off program. So I have individuals who participate in that. And, you know, so as as different groups have sort of peeled off. We've always been able to find folks who are willing to do it. It's it's incredibly socially rewarding, both for the person who delivers. And the recipient, we really always look for a bidirectional exchange. And our seniors who are participating in that. You know, they're they're earning fifteen hundred dollars off of their real estate tax bill, which is significant for seniors. And also, you know, it's a very safe, contained and controlled opportunity for them to socialize. And to meet twelve to fourteen people on a given afternoon and and exchange conversation at the doorstep. So we haven't, we don't, haven't had a problem continuing the program luckily. It has expanded certainly, but. You know, we we've really, we've been fortunate.
Other questions from members of the committee? Yeah, I guess my last question is, since you look forward to the year ahead and is in your plans for. Getting the center reopened and shifting programs back. Because do you, do you have any concerns about? Whether there's resources available to support you going forward with the steps that need to be taken?
No, I think it's less a question of resources and more the way in which our small footprint. Impedes gatherings that are the typical size that we previously had. So we would have a class of twenty to twenty-five. But now probably the the largest room will be able to access, the clinic will have to close down. So after that, we'd have the large activity room which we could fit approximately fifteen people in. And so the the other rooms are much smaller, you know, and some of them will only allow, say, six people, sometimes four to five. So the capacity, as long as there's social distancing in order or in effect, will limit. Our ability to facilitate programming. At the same time, I think that. To me, it's also a benefit because I think that early adopters who come will be able to help facilitate conversations with people who are more anxious. And by August, sort of a ground swell will start to build, I'm hoping, around people coming here experiencing that it is. And by August, sort of a ground swell will start to build, I'm hoping, around people coming here experiencing that it is safe. That we have lots of safety procedures in in order and it feels orderly and it's a cautious way to proceed. And then as the restrictions lift in August, I think it will come together nicely, both socially and emotionally. And also our capacity to to serve programs. So most of our programming is done, it's it's through volunteers, quite honestly. It's, you know, we're a real volunteer based organization and. So I I don't think it's a question of of resources. I think it's more just going to be the question of space and space will open up as time goes on.
Is the RSVP program been up and running in full force?
Well, yeah, it's up and running, but our RSVP volunteers have not have 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 not volunteered during COVID. And they have not yet returned. And I will say that that's, you know, there's another piece to this that I have found the difference between. Anticipation versus the reality. So lots of folks have been calling me for months saying, when are you going to open? And then when I reached out to teachers and volunteers. The fact that they're going to be working with individuals who are not vaccinated had a very chilling effect and on their willingness to return. And I think we're seeing probably up to about fifty percent of of volunteers being willing to teach. And then also to return. So again, you know, it's it's going to be an incremental resumption. I I think based on the fact that there's not a guarantee that we're going into a space with all vaccinated people. Because we were, they were so very vulnerable. Again, you know, the messaging was so strict for older adults. And to sort of expect that they can suddenly take that off and. Get together with groups of people who are unvaccinated, you know, it is, I think it's going to take time before we're ready to make that. Kind of cultural shift.
Yeah, well, I appreciate all that you've been doing in this very tough year because you just touched on the. Question of the vulnerability of the population, but also the concern about. There being historically vulnerable to isolation, which is one of the things that senior centers about. And so you've had some extraordinary challenges and appreciate keeping after it. Any other questions from the committee? Otherwise, I think we can sort of conclude because I think we really understand the budget. And appreciate what it's going for. Anything else from the committee looking for hands? Seeing none. Okay, well, Mary Beth, thank you very much. Thank you for your patience.
Yep. Have a wonderful weekend and especially to Jane. Happy Mother's Day. I love seeing her swing the baby over. Since memories, mother four, so take good care. Good luck with all your decisions.
Very much, Mary Beth. Thank you.
So concluding comments about today, we're unfortunately the. Do we have anything? Doesn't look like the senior centers represented that.
You mean, you mean Veteran Services? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you want, we can try to schedule it later. I mean, Paul and I could probably talk about it a little bit if you want to try to do today. Or we can try to wait and get Steve Connor at a future meeting.
Do, were there any questions that people feel that they need Steve here for? I had my only comment was this and again, it's in budget presentation in part. The budget for the scene for for, excuse me, for veterans. Also includes a substantial portion of it is the benefits. Of which we are responsible for paying benefits and then get reimbursed seventy five percent. And that comes in after the fact. But.
Yeah, yeah. So the so the operating budget of two eighty, that's the two big pieces in there are the benefits that are paid out. And then our assessment to be part of the group with other members of Hampshire County. And the benefits, yeah, the benefits paid out is the full amount. It's not just the town because because we get reimbursed after the fact. So it's the full amount of benefits we pay out and then the seventy five percent reimbursement comes in on the revenue side of the budget. And you can see that on the service levels a little bit. If you look at the the service levels, it's not exactly seventy five percent because there's some things that are reimbursed at a different percentage. According to Steve kind of walked us through this when we did our department meeting with him. So there's a little bit of a difference. It's not always that percentage, but um, but there's roughly a. A one year lag or so. Can I add a couple of other things, Andy, real quick that Steve had mentioned to us in in the hearing that we had with him?
Yes.
So just a couple of other brief things similar to some of the issues Mary Beth had identified, I think. Steve and the Veteran Services probably has some of the same challenges, not being able to pull people together for events the same way that they have done the past. So he had noted that, you know, a high priority for him is outreach and trying to engage people in different ways. And that's what he's been trying to do. I think he said, you know, we are seeing numbers drop a little bit in Amherst in terms of the number of veterans that are claiming benefits. So again, he's doing a lot of work around outreach to make sure that they're not missing anybody and that everybody who's eligible for benefits can get it. And I think, you know, I'll just point you to his, he wrote a lot for the accomplishments of things they've been working on. So I'll let that kind of speak for itself. And if there are any follow up questions for Steve, we can certainly get those to him or try to get him back at a future meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments from the committee about Veteran Services? Or things you'd like to know and. Would pose through Sean? Okay, I think that people are comfortable with that. So. You will, we're pretty much at the end of the agenda for today, except for I want to get back to Lynn's question. Which is what it is that we're reporting to. The. The council in our interim reports. And my suggestion is that. We don't need to repeat what's in the book. What we want to do is. If we've asked questions that we think are important. That are additional to the information that was presented, you know, provided through the questions we've. We've obtained information that's additional to what's in the budget as presented. And that includes for the schools, that that's where we should probably make our focus and. If I, what I would appreciate is if you have notes on the sections that you were responsible for in particular. Or just any notes, but really want to focus on the ones that were, did your sections. If you just even put it as a one or two paragraphs and get it to me so that I can. Add it into the report that I have to submit to town meeting or to town to town, and I say that to the council. Would be very helpful. So please do that. Kathy?
Andy, can you just resend the schedule for when each thing is? Because somehow I missed that the twentieth. Had been because of the conflict with C R C. I just, I don't know where to find the schedule of. I know when my section, police and fires, but just, yeah.
We can resend it, but if you want it real fast, it's in the packet for the for the most recent council meeting.
Well, I looked for it and then I don't know what the name of it is. If you don't remember what the most recent packet looked like. For it gives you, if I knew what the first three words of it might be, but I tried. So.
Andy, I have it right here, so I'll forward it right now.
I knew it was in that packet. I just couldn't find it, couldn't find it when I went to look. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'd love another copy too, Sean.
Yeah, I'll send out to the full group. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Andy, in 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 terms of what we write up, I I I think what we talked about last year. Is still relevant and that is kind of pointing out some of the things that may not, you know, they're they're important for the council to. Think about and understand. You know, for example, just in the recent discussion of the senior center, I mean. The aging of the town is something we're going to have to deal with, you know, and it's going to impact a lot of different things. That's a piece of information that you might not get by just reading the budget. So I think that's the kind of information that is very helpful, I think would be helpful to the council and helpful to, you know, people. People in the town as well to understand these things. So.
The the other. Was that me? The other thing we did last year was if something came up that we got information that wasn't already in the budget book. That we thought was of broader interest, we made sure to highlight it. It's just we, we got additional report analysis. What whatever it might be that wasn't on page forty four of the budget book somewhere.
And the other thing I want to say is I'm I'm I've been working through the. The enterprise funds and the DPW section and Sean, I'm going to probably have some questions. On Monday around, you know, Monday, I'll send to you. And if anybody else has questions or issues that they've. They've seen in that, just let me know. Just shoot me an email.
Well, thank you. So anything else? If not, then I think that we've completed the agenda for today. If you have. Sections where you've already been the responsible person and can start working on your section. Be very helpful because we can then include it in the next council report. So with that, I guess I'll declare the meeting adjourned.